Yeah.
Yeah, I was. Yes, I am. I was here earlier. I just did.
I know, I know. You were here and disappeared, so I was waiting.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Yeah, you're up first because our audit- auditors are coming, so.
Oh, I was looking forward to it.
Well, yeah, you'll get a chance someday.
All right, let me turn my volume up so I can hear you guys a little better. There it is. There we go. Yeah, I wasn't aware the auditors weren't going to be here, so but this is just fine. We're talking inclusionary zoning. I had told the city council I'd bring this to you before sending it to the planning commission. Um, this one does require going to the planning commission as an amendment because it is located within the zoning code itself, which is under the requirement for the planning commission to hold a public hearing and provide a recommendation for any amendments. So what I put in the packet for the city council are items that have been reviewed in the past by the housing committee, which has since been disbanded. Um, but it is the under tab C, Fugit Sound Regional Council, they had a really wonderful website with lots of information about affordable housing, and it includes this handout on inclusionary zoning. So I hope you have a chance to look at that. Um, it talks about what inclusionary zoning is and where is it most applicable. Um, it also talks about what you might need to know about inclusionary zoning, but typically what inclusionary zoning is is the ability to increase the number of units, the density for the developer, so they can increase their density, and those additional units were may or may not be for affordable housing. So if a developer was allowed to say do four units per acre, and you had inclusionary zoning option in the code, you could bump that to fifteen units per acre and if they provided a certain percentage at affordable uh, price point, and you get to define what affordable is. Um, often with this type of zoning, there are benefits for reduced setbacks, increased lot coverage is a huge motivator, and reduce parking requirements. So those kind of things generally all tied together with inclusionary zoning. The reason you give all of these benefits is because the developers still has a bottom line that they're trying to maintain. Over the life of their career, uh, most developers will go through a couple of recessions. Uh, so you know, it may seem like they're making huge profits, but in the scheme of things, it's probably not true, not as true as you might think. Um, but the other side is even year to year, they can have hits and misses, and even looking at the last five years, housing costs have skyrocketed. So developers who had a lot of land already in uh, their portfolio might be doing fairly well, but also construction prices have gone up significantly as well, too. And now we're starting to see values come down, houses staying on the market. Um, so things have definitely slowed, and that's good overall for everybody. But in any case, the inclusionary zoning allows them to add units which cost money, but not lose out on maintaining a minimum profit or profit margin for them. Um, so by increasing the density, reducing the parking, increasing lot coverage, uh, those units can fit on lots that wouldn't have normally had that option, and that also helps the developer. They're not out looking for lots. When you make men, uh, when you make that affordable housing unit mandatory, um, it is very common for developers to say, well, I'm just gonna build just below the mandatory number of units, so I don't trigger that. Um, what they found is only the largest cities, larger cities and the highest land values benefit traditionally from inclusionary zoning. Uh, cities like Bellevue, um, but even large cities like that, they have a limited number of benefits. So also in your packet, oh, I just provided a new resource that I hadn't seen before, and it's called the Inclusionary Calculator. And it is a website that takes these basic factors into play because inclusionary zoning is talked about across the nation, not just in Washington State. But it takes the basic factors and says, here's your land value, here's the standard profit for a developer, here's how many units per acre, here's the parking requirements, because those are the big ones. Um, and you can change those and determine at what point does it become viable for the developer to, um, to build the project that you're seeking. So if you haven't hopped on to this tool, inclusionaryhousing.org backslash calculator backslash, it was in the write-up. I strongly suggest you check it out. Um, it's actually pretty fun to play around with, and you can put in known property values in Leavenworth, although, um, and then you can change the factors and determine what, what do we need to see in order to make people build at that on those sites, make that land value handout. Um, yeah, very interesting stuff. Okay, so that's just a little background on inclusionary zoning, and I wanted to walk through what we have adopted, which is a voluntary uh, type of affordable low-income housing incentives. It's the same program as inclusionary, only it's not mandatory. And I have to say that our incentives may not be high enough for a mandatory program, but before we dig into our individual existing code, I wanted to ask if there are any questions.
I have questions. Um, if you do this, if a builder does this, does he also, if we were to pass the M, what is it, MFTD, would he qualify for it?
Well, he could apply. He or she, yeah, he or she could apply for a multifamily tax exemption. Yes, and that it would be in the calculator later, something that would increase the feasibility of the development. Um, I don't believe that calculator actually had that program in it because it's a national program. It's focused more on land use.
And is, uh, is this, when you say inclusionary, are you talking about all the zones? Single family, the family?
Uh, yeah, multifamily. Yes, the way we drafted the current program is it is in the multifamily and the single family. Residential districts, multifamily districts. It's not in the commercial zones where you can do mixed-use development, but that's because we already have, we don't have a density limit there, so.
So it is in the single family?
Yes, the current one is, mm-hmm. And this program would just take the existing code and look at modifying it to make it mandatory for certain-sized projects.
But when you, when you do a mandatory, how, is there any statistics on how many um, developers just opt out and pay the fee in lieu of?
I need to do a little more research on that. I haven't seen that. Um, and we don't have to do a fee in lieu of, I don't think. Um, that was one of my questions for the city council. I wanted to walk through our existing code and ask what kind of things the city council members are thinking would be a good starting place for encouraging developers to use this program. Like, would you be okay say with the fee in lieu of, but also further reduce parking, more density, any other ideas you might have?
Lilith, my question, I'm sorry, I had a question regarding, I'm sorry, why don't you finish what you were saying? I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Marco, go ahead.
Okay, um, I might backtrack a little. What was the reasoning of the planning committee, I think, who came up with this? To, um, to go with voluntary instead of using the full opportunity of the RCW thirty-six seventy-eight that says, you know, we have the authority to establish mandatory requirements. I mean, in my opinion, developers have the benefit of our, gosh, forty years of developing the Bavarian theme and creating a hugely attractive place to build. So I have a feeling we would have so many people regardless of a mandatory inclusionary policy who would be chomping at the bit to build here, even if they had to build a certain percentage as inclusionary. So I'm curious what the reasoning was by the planning commission to offer it as voluntary, because as city council, I would be in favor of making it mandatory.
Well, that's what we'll be talking about with them is making it mandatory, but the, the reality is our previous research has shown that a city, particularly a city our size, won't benefit from inclusionary zoning because there isn't enough demand. If the, um, Wegner Group had not been invited to, uh, build on Tomlin's property behind Safeway, they may not have ever put us on their radar. And outside of that, those large developments, we've never had the growth we've seen. If you look back, um, before I came on board, we were getting two or three residential permits a year. Um, they had just allowed ADUs, and we only had a few of those per year. Uh, so prior to that, it, our growth was substantially less than one percent. Uh, it, it's been outstanding, the amount of growth we've seen and the development that's occurred. We knew that the Pine Street subdivision, you know, was a big one at the time. We hadn't seen a subdivision that large in decades. Uh, most of the subdivisions going on were, you know, two or three lots. Um, I think we had Nordic Track, and that was, you know, five or six lots. Um, so right off Pine Street, that got a ball rolling that has since taken off up the hill. And we don't have a lot of land. So I, I certainly see that, you know, Leavenworth has substantial value as a commercial property, but even that area has not seen a whole ton of development. We had the new Rhine House. We had the rebuild on the hospital. We've had the conversion of a couple of the houses in the commercial zone to, um, commercial uses. We still have vacant land downtown. Uh, we've not seen a ton of pressure on the multifamily downtown. Um, I'm talking about Commercial Street, multifamily zoning. Most of those houses are going for, you know, bed and breakfast, and the houses on Front Street, a lot of those are short-term rentals. Um, we've seen some new construction there of new short-term rentals. Our community is doing excellent. But to say that we have this some super fabulous demand to live here and be here, and we, we can exact additional low-income housing from developers, it'll, it has yet to be seen. It's, it's gonna be a challenge. And the multifamily tax exemption is a high bar under state law with the twenty percent or the twenty-five for housing. So that one's gonna be hard for developers to use as well. Um, and this one will be equally challenging. The numbers are just, don't really add up very well. Um, so I, I do need to hear from the city council if you're interested in doing something more extreme, like saying no parking is gonna be required. You know, then, then it'll be up to them to provide alternatives. And I know we don't have on-street parking, and it's a huge uh, ask in the community as a whole is not in favor of it. But are we, are we willing to talk, to talk about those things? Are we willing to look at those things in order to get more affordable housing? That's my question to the city council.
Lilith, I got a question. Actually, I got two. Um, do you know anybody on the county levels considering this? Because they have the land and we don't uh, to encourage building outside of our city land?
Well, the county's hands are a bit more tied because under the Growth Management Act, there should be encouraging density within the urban growth areas. And so that gets us back to that discussion we had two years ago. We put on hold all of this year. Um, was expanding our urban growth area. And the survey we had done the year prior, uh, was very well taken across the community, people inside the UGA and outs, uh, and inside the city limits, talking about going north all the way to the top of Titus, and I do hear from a property owner up there that they would run sewer up to the top of Titus. And sewer is the number one factor for density, um, or the development of initial density. The, so you know, if we wanna get back to looking at expanding the UGA, which we may, after having won our Growth Management Board Hearing.
But there's no guarantee that those landowners are gonna keep that, those anchors in peace. Right? So there's no guarantee, even if the UGA grows, that that land will not turn into some lots, just like everything else has on Pine Street up.
Right, and so do we look at a, a new zoning or different zoning? What are you, what are you hoping to have up there? Are you wanting multifamily zoning? We could make it multifamily, and we could prohibit single family in the multifamily zone. That would force it to be multifamily. We could do more of a combination?
I just, I understand where we're going, but I think we also have a responsibility to other property owners not to put something huge in their backyard. So, because that's the big push, that we have people that want density and people that don't want density. So can we limit the amount of density? Let's say we, this is adopted, and we say, well, not fifteen per acre, it's only eight per acre. Do we get to set that, or is there something at the state level that says we can't?
Well, no, it's just gonna come down to number crunching. If the land is a million dollars an acre and they can get, you know, eight units per acre, that's not gonna be enough to incentivize them to do low income. You know, and, or if we're just talking about increasing density, we can look at that, too. But today, we're just looking at.
I think it's got a lot of layers, and I don't think it's as easy as just we pick one or the other. This is gonna take some time.
But the point is, it doesn't have to be ubiquitous, so we could easily just say, here's an area where we would like higher density in the urban growth area that would create a zone that would say, hey, here's a bunch of, of density, like apartment buildings and condominiums, and not affect the people who don't want it in their backyards, but create an area, a zone that would have a low impact on people who already lived there and didn't want that in their backyard while still providing the benefit of these places. Because ultimately, if we do make it mandatory inclusionary and people do build density, it might not happen as quickly if we make it mandatory, which I'm actually okay with slower growth. I don't think we need to fill all our spaces right away and find the right people to fill them up, and I know that's a future discussion topic, but I see that as an if or then, so that if we do make it mandatory, yeah, maybe it won't pencil out for most, but some might see the value as the value the property values here increase, so that would just slow down our growth, which actually I think is probably a pretty good thing.
Can we not make it mandatory and just put the information out, and those people that would like to do it would do it because they, they'd have the information to do it, and those that, um, you know, instead of mandating things on top of people? I mean, maybe those that have property don't even know what they can do with it.
There's, there's zoning now. It's got chapter eighteen point forty-two, which is in your packet. That is our existing code. Um, that is an incentive for, for, but no one's taken advantage of it yet.
And maybe there's a lot of people that don't even know where it is or how to find it or that it exists.
Well, developers have to find it.
Developers, it just doesn't pencil at this cost.
Right. I'd like to see a map of the city limits that showed, um, clear, just, you know, we don't even have to put houses on it. Just show the spaces where, are there any spaces in the city limits? Like, you, you could even do those things.
Yeah, um, I, I'm gonna work on pulling that up, so I hope I don't freeze too much, because that is already available on our GIS map on our city website. In the meantime, Zeke, you have your hand up?
Yeah, um, so my question, Lilith, would be that, um, yeah, you, if people, you know, we've had this explosion in growth since the pandemic of pine grass and now album glow, you know? So we didn't see that coming very well, like, six years ago. What I'm saying is that, um, this should be a, a tool we should have available, uh, and it should be mandatory because the conditions might not be there right now, but they're gonna, I can guarantee you they're gonna change because people are gonna continue to come to this, this place to build, and I think we need that kind of, uh, option, mandatory inclusionary zoning uh, for, for developers, because I kind of agree with, uh, Marco that eventually it's gonna get there, and we need to have that as a, as a tool to consider, um, implementing, so it's ready to go, and we don't have to scramble to have it. It's, it's just, it's there. So I'm still very much in favor of, um, uh, a mandatory inclusionary zoning in the Leavenworth, uh, UGA or city limits.
So Zeke, can you tell me which components would you how, offer to a developer? Would it be the parking, the density? Um, or lot coverage? What kind of incentives? I mean, we have some already, but what additional? Would you provide more? What, what are you thinking?
So I would look at the, I'd have to consider where this is and what, if it's multifamily or single-family residences. But I would suppose an option I would consider for trade-off for them building those units would be the, um, the density issue, increase in density.
Okay. And then maybe we'll just do a little roundtable with council members. Tibor, what kind of incentives would, would you provide as a trade-off?
Well, definitely not parking, because we have enough of that as it is, so why give it up? Uh, I think that I'm leaning towards the density. It just depends what that number is. Uh, I know that if I lived at the top of Titus Road, I wouldn't want five stories sit in front of me. So it'll, and it's kind of like, how does that density look? How big is it? And I mean, I don't think we need to boil the ocean here. I think we need to start small and see if it works. You know, and if that's four per acre or six per acre or eight per acre, and let's test the market, see what the developers, or if a developer comes back and says, I, I can't do eight, but I can do ten, then we should look at that. But sixteen? Well, I don't know. Well, that's where I'm at.
Okay. And Marco?
I, I'd look more at the Widener Development behind Safeway and say, that's a pretty good amount of density that would work well, and I would offer that, um, to make just what he built there, uh, but have it with inclusionary zoning, like that specific model of, of building, then add inclusionary zoning. I think that would be a great, a great development. And you know, if you, I, like you said, the incentive, I agree with Tibor, don't give him the parking, but I would say the density and, and possibly the, uh, what was the other one you had? The, uh, covered, lot coverage?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be like condominiums. However, we still need green space, because that's who we are. So.
You got fire issues.
Yeah, you got fire issues when there's conflagration potential. So, yeah, all that saying density might be the best option in that respect, but like I said, using the, 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 um, what is it, Alpine, the Alpine Village there? What, what other name is that? The Widener House behind Safeway. If that had simply had inclusion, Leavenworth House, yeah, if that had simply had inclusionary zoning attached to that, that would be a great model.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I can't see the screen very well, so who's next there? Clint?
Hi, it's Clint. Um, Sharon, would you mind leapfrogging over me? I'm still trying to articulate my thoughts here.
Oh, my God, my thoughts are all gonna clump. I, I'm not sure I, I totally follow all this. Are we talking about the urban growth area and property that's owned by a builder that wants to do something? Or property that has an owner that doesn't want to do anything?
Uh, it's not related to the ownership. We're talking about what you as a council member might, if anything, want to provide a developer, and it could be, property owners are developers, too, in, in exchange for low-income affordable housing. Density, lot coverage and parking are the common things that we increase.
I think I'm still missing a link here. The properties all owned up there already, right?
Yes.
Okay. And I have a tough time putting something on an owner that would want to do something else, and now they can't use their property for what they wanted to use it for. So am I not following this right? And you're.
Well, what we're saying is if they wanted to do, say, for a fourplex, and we said that if you're gonna do four units, one of them has to be low income. But to help offset that, we're gonna let you do five units instead of four. And so that would be an increase in density to get the low-income unit. Another incentive would be to go from thirty-five percent lot coverage to forty-five percent, or to reduce the parking. So is there anything like that, that you would provide a property owner slash developer who wanted to do more units so that they would include low income?
So I own property up there, and you've, you have these things that are available, and I wanted to do something. I'm not being forced to do them. I can do whatever, something else. Is that right? Or if we put that up there, are then those their only choices to do with their property?
No, 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 only if they want to build more units.
Okay.
Then they, then if they do enough units that this would kick in, then they would, that would apply to them, but they don't have to do anything.
Okay, so if they just wanted to build a house on their property for their kids to live in, they're, okay.
Yeah, no, no, it's only if they're gonna develop. It's only if they want to develop it with multiple units. That would kick into whatever the program is that we set up. If it was enough units to kick that in, and that's why, that's the discussion. What, what, when would we want? You know, and it's gonna go again to the planning commission to hash over. She's just trying to say, give some direction to them from the council. But they'll, they'll go through it all as well and come back with recommendations. So this is just the start.
So if you didn't have those in place, then they could apply to do it, right? Or did they have to be in place for them to do it?
Well, we're trying to say you have to provide affordable housing. If you're gonna build, say, four units. You have to it provide affordable. And in exchange for that, we're gonna give you something else. And that could be density, less parking, additional lock coverage, or or something else.
Do that, then they can't do anything else?
Well, they couldn't do four units. They could do three. That's inclusion.
Any favor of closing anything on anybody else's property?
Okay, that's good to know. And that's, that's why we're having this discussion. I need a little. Buy in from the council members before we get to the public debate. Clint?
Counterpoint, I am. Let me just take you through my thought process and, um, there're gonna be some leaps here, so disabuse me of my ignorance if need be. I guess where I'm coming at is, I mean, if if we're talking about a trade off. If you're pressing me. I'd go for density. Um. But I guess my question is just more generally. Do we need a trade off? And this is where I'm at. Like, right now. These are the facts I'm traveling with, like region wide, we're dealing with admirably high and increasing values of land locally. This is an incredibly desirable market fueled by, I would almost call it irrational capital. Originating from folks who are seeking second homes, vesting stock options from tech money in Seattle. It's it's irrational. If you receive your property values from the assessor, um, yeah. So I guess my question is, we're dealing with a lack of land and intense demands for housing and values that are spiraling almost by the minute. I guess I'm having trouble with the pushback saying. Look, inclusionary zoning is the price to develop here. There really aren't. Trade offs, and if that doesn't pencil out for you, wait a year or two, the land values will probably pencil out. Like, I I get that feels harsh because it is, but also we have a, we have an incredible lack of land. Where we can create a demonstrable difference here. And there's a part of me that feels like developers will do. The absolute minimum to get the maximum amount of benefit. And we're kind of sitting here with all our aces. So why not try to create the most possible? Return on our civic investment, um. And that's just where I'm at. But I I don't even know if, do we have to provide those trade offs legally? For them to to build, um. I guess that's, I I guess that's where I'm at.
Let me give you a counterpoint on that.
Okay.
So if you take the.
Oh, wait a minute, before you start with the counterpoint, I just want you to be super clear on this. This does not refer to the example Sharon referred to with her, you know, wanting to build a house for her kids. We're talking about. We're talking about multiple units.
Yeah, yeah, and I like how you articulated that. So, thank you.
Because I know that when. McDebit did his, he was not going to let a developer come in and buy a whole. So we have that where there may be a subdivision. But you're never gonna see any density on it because the landowner or the developer of the land is gonna say, no. These are individual lots, but I'm not gonna let somebody buy four or five of them right next to each other. And then insert something like that in the middle of it. Let's just call it a neighborhood. So to force somebody to do something. I'm kind of with Sharon on that is, I think if we have a hook to do things, we should explore that, but to force somebody. Because we don't have the land. And if somebody comes in and buys up the land and says, fine, I'll just sit on it, then nothing gets done. Because like you said, the counterpoint I'm making is the land value is there, and if he has enough money, he can sit on it. And afford to sit on it and wait us out or wait something else out.
I'd rather nothing being done than the wrong thing.
Well, exactly, but what is the right thing and what's the wrong thing? That's where we have to debate here is. Is. When we impose our will and our wants. On somebody and that turns out to be wrong. How do we correct that? Or can, I think we just, I think we'll move slow. If you look at it and you say. Where's the land? Where's the development gonna come and what's it gonna look like?
I hear both sides of that, but I still think like Clint, we hold the policy, we have the right to impose it according to the R C W. And we're not in a rush. If nothing gets built, it doesn't hurt me too much.
But we seem to be in a rush.
I'm not. I mean, I think. Well, right now it's in a rush because it's a free for all, because we're not imposing anything. So people are doing whatever they want and getting away with it and are gonna make tons of money. Like, you think Widener's losing money behind Safeway? That's my point.
Nobody's losing money behind. Even Safeway's.
Absolutely, so I tell you. We need to just.
I think we need to. I think we need to be careful. I move slowly. I think it's a thoughtful process. And I appreciate your point too. Thank you. I don't want to chase anybody away.
No, that's right. I wanna, I wanna stay inclusion.
Yeah, I was gonna say, um. So this is just, this is an option, doesn't mean we have to institute it, but we, in order for it to ever use it, we need to have it ready, but it's like. This isn't like, once we pass this, once it goes, we give our in input to the planning commission. They come back with a established policy, its own thing. It's still, it's still up to the city council, right?
No, once it's adopted into the zoning code, then it's administrative. The inclusionary zoning, it's that's, it is handled differently than the multifamily tax exemption. Which comes to the city councils for a review. It is just, it's just straight administrative zoning.
But af- but after you guys pass it, you will see it again and have to pass it before it would take effect. But then once it does, that's in the code, just like your other zones, and it would, it would apply.
What are you talking about now, the multifamily?
No, I'm talking about if and when something passes that's inclusionary. Then it would be, it wouldn't come back to you for every project, like the multifamily does.
Does it, does it not make sense to just have those um available? But that that they don't have to be used. I like that.
And it's not been used.
I mean, if it's there and they can use it, fine, but I am not in favor of imposing on somebody else's property. What they can do with it. I mean, like that.
No, like Les said, they're not actually beating down our door to do it. Other than single family homes, right, right, yeah.
But I think we've also dropped the ball on, you know, having developers, in a sense, mandate them to build parks, like this big thing behind um. Ski Hill with the with the groundwater, and we should have opened it up to a creek with the with a bike path right next to it and said, hey, you're responsible for building out a creek. Building a bike path, if you're gonna build there, or we're not gonna let you build it. I think that's great. It's because we're making the policy, we're a city to support the people, and that's what the people would likely want.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, I'm done, I'm done.
I was gonna say, we had, we don't have, did we, is this, we had a letter from a lady about all the groundwater and everything up there. And of course, we all know it's always been there.
Yeah.
Um, so. And people that did build on um Pine Street.
Pine grass.
Or pine, I'm sorry, pine grass.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
With all the water under their house. I know people across the street that have had to put a stump pump under their house since that development went in. So something's wrong with this picture.
Yeah, and correct me if I'm wrong, unfortunately, and I remember struggling this when I was in Massachusetts, doing the kind, this kind of work, is we regulate stormwater. But we don't, there's no regulation for groundwater. So when you put something in the, in the ground, it does displace groundwater. But there's no regulatory mechanism for us to control that.
Okay, thank you. I really appreciate you guys taking the time and and to give me your feedback on.
Wait a minute, we're getting the gloves on.
On inclusionary zoning, um, we don't, we don't need to talk about site specific development. That's outside the purview of the city council and could get you into trouble. So I'm just trying to help you out, moving on. So I do appreciate the feedback and we will work with the city council. I know, or work with the planning commission and share your thoughts. And I know that some of the council members wanted this to move quickly. It sounds like others wanted to move a little slower. Um, we'll test that waters with the planning commission and be mindful. Um, before I turn it back, I want to share a screen really quickly, if I can. I will show you the city GIS map, which is accessible from our main homepage. It says map on it. When you open that up. You're gonna see something like this. You have the option of putting a base map behind it. Some of these base maps have what they call a grayscale canvas. Even the one that's up initially, you'll see it has little building footprints. Let me go back. And when you zoom in. When you zoom in, you'll be able to see those footprints. Sorry, it's kind of light. On the parcel. So you want to see a map. Of density, there's a parcel here with nothing on it. Of course, it's tucked back behind, doesn't have street frontage, but nonetheless. Here's a flag lot with nothing showing on it. Of course, this might be slightly dated. But it goes to your point, uh, Sharon, of wanting to kind of know where there is land and how big lots are. This will give you a general idea and you can zoom around the city and look at these footprints. You can go back to the four square and you can put on different maps too, if you want to look at that differently. So play around with that and let me know if you have any questions. As a reminder, you can click on them to see the parcel number. You can use these parcel numbers with the assessor's website. To look up more information about what's built there, what their taxes are. And old permits, when it was built, that kind of thing. And some of these parcels are filled out in our permit tracking system as well. So we are continuously adding old building permits to the permit tracking system. And eventually you'll be able to go there, see the old permits uh for the structures. As well as the new ones. So there's lots of online data available to you if you choose to, um. Dig in a little bit. If you'd like to sit down with me and do that together, I can make myself available for that. Again, I appreciate your time today.
Yo, quickly, Lilith, that's an amazing resource. Thank you for bringing it to my attention. I had no idea that it even existed in terms of footprints. Is, is there a part of that map that allows you to see specifically what percentage the footprint is? Or we just gauge by looking at it and gain a proportion just by by the visual?
You want to look at that map as general.
Okay, it's not specific.
Yeah, they can be off quite a bit, and it is based on historic data, um, always being updated, so. Unless you have the latest Google Earth map, um, it's hard to know for sure how close. That development is to what's actually on the ground.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Lilith.
Yeah, thanks.
Um, we'll go from there into the downtown fire prevention presentation. Council member Aurelio's quest, we've got Mark default here. And Mark, you've got something to share with us?
I got, thanks for uh giving me the opportunity to share everything. Um, yeah, we are an ember defense system, the platypus sprinkler. And controller, um, and I'm gonna share a screen with you for you. One second here, sorry about that. Okay, can everybody see that? Great, so, um. We're a ember fence system, so we're a fully autonomous exterior wildfire defense system. There's many layers to wildfire defense. And wetting system is one of them. You want to look at fuel mitigations, you want to look at. Uh, gutter guards, you want to look at proper vents, um, long term retardants as well. And here is a controller that we've designed, fully autonomous, um. We have an LCD touchscreen in the top left corner that allows you to program and put diesel pumps, uh. Electric pumps, valves, uh, water sensors, fuel sensors. Um, we can control all types of pumping, uh, to deliver water to structures, um. The other part, uh, we have three ways to start the system. Uh, one is ambient air temperature. So we would set a trigger set point, so take the. You know, Leavenworth, historically, let's say it was a hundred degrees, was the hottest day ever recorded. We would set a temperature for one oh two. Once that temperature is reached, the system would activate. The other is, there's the evac button, you can see on the bottom of the right screen, and there is a button there, you press, hold down for five seconds, it would activate. Uh, the system. The next is a text message, so you can text message. Uh, the controller, the controller would activate and go through a pre-programmed cycle uh to dispense uh the water in the wetting system and activate it. We have any, and then you can program up to five users. So you would get key people, um, input their number into this controller. This controller then would receive and send messages to these five users. These five users would be able to. Uh, send evac on, change the trigger set point temperature, uh, a few other commands. Um, our power source for this controller. So we use main power. So utility power routinely maintains and runs the controller. Uh, battery backup, so if mains power goes down, there's no generator for critical load that this is a part of. You would then, these battery backups, it's a normally a hundred and fifteen amp hour AMG battery, which gives you ten days. Of uh no recharge of the battery system, and that would start our pumps controlling any of our valving and communication. In addition to that, we have the solar backup, so solar, while their sun is charging, maintaining the system. Night comes, we have no charge, but again, we start back up and charging uh daytime. Any questions?
Yeah, quickly, uh, Mark, just a kind of a background, um.
Yeah.
Why, why did you develop this system? I'm just, because part of what I'm trying to get at here is that we're the number one risk in Washington state for a big fire. And embers, as I think most people know, cause eighty percent of the home structure fires. So it's not wildfire directly hitting your home, it's the ember storm that happens. So could you just back up a little and give me, like. You obviously invested a lot of time, effort and money into engineering the system because of embers. Could you just back up and tell us a little bit why embers are so important to to quench?
Yes, um, I did not develop this. Jamie Boils uh developed this out of Australia, so. He's in the bushfire industry, uh, wildfire, bushfire, the same. And it is, yeah, the, their Black Friday, and again, it was the embers that caught all the structures on fire. People have debris, uh, wood piles next to their house for warming heat, um, furniture, these kind of things. Uh, mats, it, uh, embers get into gutters. Um, that debris is built up, um, and so it's a way to wet. And it's really hard to burn things that are already wet or moist versus something that's dry and then trying to put that out with water and chase it down. Things that are already wet or moist versus something that's dry and then trying to put that out with water and chase it down. So he saw a, a need for this. Um, you know, how do we get ahead of a fire and how do we? Try to prevent these embers from igniting? Cause they do. We've seen this in California where, you know, the, the biggest eye opener. Um, was the Paradise Fire and such devastation. And it was, the embers were casted. Miles, eight, ten miles ahead of where the fire truly was and trapped people. It became, you know, catastrophic event. Um. So being able to get ahead of it, kind of create a protection, create a, a bubble of humidity around an area. You know, fire does not like to compete with water. So he developed this system in a very simple, easy to control. To, you know, try to fight off the embers.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Yeah, it was helpful because I just, one of the things that's hit us more recently is the Maui fires where twenty-two hundred structures were lost. And Medical Lake, which is about an hour and a half from here, they lost two hundred and forty structures and. Essentially what happens is the wildfires happen, you get the embers, catches two or three homes with wind and hot air. And it causes what Chief O'Brien came and talked about called a conflagration, where one home catches another, catches another. And I, I honestly believe that these sprinklers would make a huge difference. More specifically, I just want to create a, a comparison of. Our downtown to the fire we had here in Wenatchee. In two thousand fifteen, we had a fire called the Sleepy Hollow Fire, where embers caught on the roofs of. Um, fruit warehouses which have combustible rubber membrane. And correct me if I'm wrong, I think that's pretty much what we have downtown. Is combustible rubber membrane roofs. And I could see that happening here. So what I'm proposing specifically is. For this system to be set up downtown with downtown, you know, uh, commercial funding, lodging tax funding. To protect the downtown corridor from having a conflagration from an ember storm, which I believe would be a repeat of what we saw. In Wenatchee in two thousand fifteen. So that's specifically what I'm getting at, Mark. I'll let you have.
Okay, well, our uh, sprinkler here, which is on the screen, this is designed around uh, wildfire. It designed for wildfire. We actually look at droplets. So. An irrigation head, there's people out there using these and it, you try to put an irrigation head into a wind, it's gonna. It's a wind-driven event, comes with fire. You're gonna take all the wire and water and spread it to your neighbors. Not gonna be for you. So in the design of this, this uh, just go down a little bit. Um, you know, we have UV stabilizers, we have fire retardant built in, all the black pieces have that into it. Then you have the stainless steel spray. Um, get into this one. There's just some sizing um, of the head and then how, these are placed every eleven and a half feet around a structure. Um, we do have perimeter uh, systems as well. We'll talk about that in a minute. Um, the flow control, this is really important to our sprays that. Oops, back, that's that. Um, it optimizes the performance. So every single head is going to spray the same. Allows the furthest spray to spray the same as the closest spray. And like interior sprinklers, you might have one, two, three sprinklers go off in an interior fire system. Well, these systems are, are designed that every spray goes off at once. So everything needs to perform the same. Um, let's go to the next here. So here's some examples of uh, some systems that are installed on a retrofit. We like to use copper pipe, we can use stainless steel pipe as well. Um, don't want to use galvanized that rust, it flakes off because into our sprays. Um, these sprays can be maintained. Um, they're designed to spray down and you're gonna get large water droplets. And that's what's key. Again, you have the weight and the volume of the water droplet actually hitting structure, not blowing away in a mist. They're designed with proper pressures as far as the pumping. Um, and then with the flow control helps maintain the exact pressure. For these things to perform optimal. Um, and minimal uh, water loss to win. That's what's great about them. Uh, different size sprays. So we go from the one point six to the two point four GPM sprays. Um, some examples of a tank farm, just pipe work uh, on a structure, try to be as discreet as we can, but it's really hard to. Uh, hide the pipe work unless we're in new construction, which we can do, or we get into. To make intensive remodel work to really conceal that pipe work or maybe making some trim to hide it. Um, here's an example of a video of a spray here in Napa that we did. And again, you can see the large water droplets are coming out. And this is in ideal conditions, but. You can see the large water droplets, which is very important and not very uh, there's no windswept camp driven. Uh, here is fire department in Australia. And they're putting them on all their infrastructure there. Australia is far ahead of what the United States is doing. Even though that looks misty, uh, you'll see in a second that there's amount of water in less than a minute that's on the ground.
Yeah, it looks wet.
So we can also do perimeter protection. And so here you have. The large water cannon to the left and this is portable. We have fire departments, we can set up situation uh. Uh, containers that are set up, rated wool, um, have a, an action plan. And to deploy off of your fire hydrants. So they go from thirty-seven to a hundred and ten gallons a minute, depending on the nozzle size we choose and depending on, you know, how close structures are. And get coverage around. Uh, three hundred foot radius for the largest nozzle. So, and that's large coverage. And again, you're creating, creating a humidity bubble around the community or areas that you want to protect.
Mark, I want to jump in really quick here. Um, when I, when I was a firefighter and you were given a breath engine to do uh, triage. They'd give you and a wildfire was coming. They would give you a neighborhood and say, here's thirty homes you have to protect. Wildfire is coming. The Forest Service would provide a stockpile of this equipment that Mark is talking about. And you would deploy your men, because you can't fight thirty homes at once. So what do you do? You prep them by getting them wet and keeping them wet. And so you set up these massive manifolds of pipe hooked to fire hydrants, which hopefully will retain pressure and ours will, thankfully to our new generator system. Right, Tom? And you set up neighborhoods with these sprinkler systems Mark's talking about. The, the question, the reason I'm, I'm really excited to see this, because in a big wildfire. We might not have all those resources available to Leavenworth, because cashmere may be on fire and Lake Wenatchee may be on fire. So. To have something like this available is really important, because the, we may just be under-resourced at those times. And. It would just, it would certainly be a cost to risk ratio, but I just wanted to put that out there that this is the same system Forest Service uses to protect neighborhoods. That have impending fire, wildfire coming into them.
We have systems like that in California, but we fight with the US Forest Service and CalFire and they'll have their caches, you know, spread out. Nobody shared. And which is a problem. They should be. I think they're getting better at it, but exactly, deploy as much as you can. The picture in the middle is a small deployment card. That's for uh, mini fire bosses or twenty-four pounds apiece. Um, you set out about a hundred and fifty foot of hose and just connect them. Um, I mean, there's only so many you're able to connect depending on pressure. And that's some stuff that we can figure out. Um, again, twenty seventy, eighty-eight gallons a minute, depending on the orifice. And you get a hundred and ninety foot radius out of these sprays. Again, the humidity bubble. So picture to the right is uh, similar to what we can do by spraying just large water cannons. And just getting and saturating, getting water out. And things are going to dry out, but with the, the timer valves that we can. Provide to, they would be able to cycle. So you're not having to go there and turn them on and off manually. We can time them. Uh, you can have key individuals turning them on and off depending on where fire is coming from and set these things around your community. Um, so this is the Adams Lake Mill Fire that just happened. And these are the fire bosses that were deployed there. Evacuated on the eighteenth. Um, this amount of structures that were lost in that area. Um, and the amount that were damaged, thirty-seven, and none were part of the mill. The mill had over a hundred million worth of assets between logs on the ground, mill lumber and uh, their milling equipment. None of that was lost. And they just kept water, they had the huge water source, which is important. How do you get that? You gotta make sure you have the pumping capabilities and build it, have that water in storage, but they continued to wet and spray. They didn't have a loss. The wedding systems are, you know, a big part of the wildfire defense, but it's not the only thing. Hardening the structures. The single pane windows are not good. Um, the proper vents, the sixteenth inch uh, venting, gutter guards, making sure roofs are clean. Gutters are clean. You don't have debris up against the house, having that zero to five foot clearance around all structures. And it's, it's layers of defense. The one, no one item will do it. And then uh. Any questions? Um, so, you know, we can do all types of structure and perimeter protection. We can design it all. Um, we're autonomous, remote activation, we're standalone. They, we can control all scales of pumping. Um, valves. We can handle it all with this small controller. Our controller is about the size of a shoebox. Um, but a piece of technology, um, provide an action plan. Once we figure out what it is that we are protecting. And build from there. And they're just designed around your needs. And uh, any questions?
What's that warranty? Sorry, guys, good one.
Well, there's continual maintenance. Uh, there's ongoing, there would be software updates as things improve. Warranty is, we have a year warranty on our product, but we do have a maintenance program. So we would be removing the platypus sprayhead. Getting it, taking it off for winter, blowing out all the pipe work for any water that's in there, capy mat. And hopefully the pipes don't burst during the winter. Uh, come spring or once uh, snow's gone, the freeze is gone, then start to put in, you know, the, the fire system, put all the sprays back on. The sprays are tested and make sure everything works properly and get it ready for a fire season.
You said that was all free? It was free.
Of free?
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Mark, do you have any of these systems in any downtown corridors anywhere?
No, this is a, a new industry. There's not a, a lot out there right now. We're dealing with wineries. We're doing with people in California that are. And elsewhere, but the insurance has dropped everybody, uh, for the most part. People are having to become self-insured. Um, it's like an experimental industry. There is a lot of talk with CalFire, US Forest Service about wedding systems. Uh, being efficient and effective. And it has, Australia does have a building code for. The systems like this, the bushfire systems, that's why this is developed there. It just hasn't caught to be a building code anywhere yet in the United States. Everything that the platypus system is meets requirements for building code in Australia.
Okay, and we have interiors, fire sprinklers, building codes, we know that. Um, have you, have you experienced any uh, insurance companies that are willing to give an incentive or a discount or? You know, just coverage alone for having these kinds of systems installed?
We've seen getting coverage, no discounts. Um, and that's a problem, just getting the insurance for some of these that are such high risk. That they don't want to insure. Uh, we're dealing with wineries and, and um, personal property where insurance is thirty, forty thousand. Uh, a million dollars a year on one of the wineries and they're like, we'll self-insure. You know, we're not going to spend a million dollars a year on you. We'll just make our own fire team there and do everything we can. We can't rely on the insurance.
Okay.
Yeah, there is, the insurance, until it becomes a building code, you're not going to see changes with uh, insurance yet.
Yeah. And, and the Adams Mill is the uh, is the only case study you have or do you have more?
Uh, there's more. Yeah, we can get that to you. There's just uh, there's the Ham Lake out of Minnesota. There was, I think it was two hundred structures. And I could send that to you and you could send that to uh, the council. Um. There was like two hundred homes there. They had a primitive uh, sprinkler system. You had to actually go out there, turn a valve. And there was a few homes that were lost. Those homes that were lost did not maintain their system. And they had broken pipes, sprinklers that weren't working and either burned completely or partially burned to, to spots that didn't have protection. So water delivery is effective, but it's not the only item. You have to do the rest of the mitigation around structures.
I know it wasn't too long ago, too many years ago, that Holden Village, that's they protected there, kept them from burning up by just keeping sprinklers on. Going in the whole village. Um, and it, it burned right down to it and spared the whole thing.
Yeah, and they were, that was manually intensive though, wasn't it? Get people up there setting up the sprinkler?
They had to set them all up, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there's many ways that we can put an action plan together. Just need to know what is uh, critical and put sprinklers around that.
Uh, yeah, what would be great is if there'd be some kind of like cost per unit or cost per, per length, per distance, so that we could. Assess our downtown based on a metric. And if there could be like a cost per specific metric, just a ballpark. So we could just make an assessment down there and we could look at, you know, use the fire department to do, look at liabilities. Cause they're, they're really good at that. And then kind of get a ballpark from our own side and then come at you to, to put together a plan.
So are you looking to do just a uh, a line set, just so, you know, lay flat hose? Um, and uh, the fire boss type unit, the fire, the water cannons type of a, a price point or permanently installed?
Uh, I, I would, I mean, I guess this is a larger conversation with everybody involved, but my, my idea was to somehow protect. We have these massive rows of, of connected buildings downtown and to somehow those roofs, at least the roofs wet. And then maybe look at more, but I would want to have that conversation with the fire department to get their best input. To say, hey, you're the experts, how, you know, what would you see is, because you know, if they were said, hey, we don't have to bother firefighting downtown. We can deal with the residents. That would be great, knowing downtown is protected and wet. So, yeah, um. You know, maybe if uh, if either you took a trip here or we could get you some photos, you might give us the best option, just. Off the cuff. And then from there, we could start looking at what the fire department would say. And obviously city council would have to take that conversation further to maybe have some kind of um, some kind of agreement to have a plan created.
Correct, yeah. And if you're to run, let's say, a line set down the center of streets and hook up the hydrants and have Y is going from hydrant. A line set to a hydrant to a line sets and continue to make sure that pressure is delivered. Well. We can get angles on a lot of the big water cannons that will deliver water, you know, everywhere, tops of roofs, uh. In the backyards and the structure all over the place. It would be a big uh, bubble of water.
Okay, yeah, because I know our fire department doesn't have that. Whether we'd have access to that from the Forest Service, like you said, would they share? I don't know. So, but to have that on standby is a tiny cost compared to what the outcome could potentially be.
Yeah, you don't want to share. You want your own. Um, it just uh, can't rely. You need to have your own plan. Don't rely on others. Have a strategy, put it together and move forward with it.
And there may even be grants for that. So knowing that we're the number one risk in Washington, I would assume their FEMA, I'm, or maybe DNR, someone might, might be worth that. So thank you. I appreciate that.
All right. Thank you, Mark, Mark.
All right, thank you guys. Thanks, council. Have a good day.
Thanks.
Thanks.
All right. Fairly quickly, snow and ice maintenance policy update.
Hey, Mayor Florrie, so this intent, this. One of the today's session is just a quick update on the snow and ice policy. Always waiting for ten minutes. Uh, John Chans, our Parks Division supervisors with us and Brick Edmonds of Utility. Uh, our Public Works Field Supervisor is also on Zoom for any operational questions. So thank you, you have for pulling up sidewalks, man. So, aid in, in the conversation. So real briefly, uh. We initially did a level of service discussion last January and subsequent to that, February of twenty twenty-three, we presented the council with a draft. Policy update. We have an existing snow ice maintenance policy, but our intent here is to update it as it's outdated. Uh, we added some uh, section on phasing for communication, fixed general typos. We added a section related to hauling snow, updated route and sidewalk maps. Uh, discussed intersection site distance and reference a code section that prohibits private property snow in place and roadway. And the general discussion and direction from the council on February fourteenth was to consider increasing the legal foot of sidewalks. Maintain in the winter. So our intent this evening is just to provide a brief update on our plan for this winter. By forgetting a, a, another review of the policy, the plans to hopefully adopt this next month. So it's gonna be a lot of sidewalks, snow rule maintenance sort of the next ten minutes. John, do you want to just give a brief overview of your equipment and sadly?
Yes, so generally for equipment sidewalk removal, we have uh, three gentlemen that do that work. And on three different skids, here's uh, their various widths, because we are limited on sidewalk space, you know. Narrowness in the sidewalks, limits what, what pieces of equipment we use where. Narrowness in the sidewalks, limits what, what pieces of equipment we use where. But generally all this work is straight up on the really.
And, and currently the existing prior to this winter, uh, John's crew maintains approximately five point two six miles of sidewalk. That's. Twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four feet. And what we're proposing, uh, this coming year, so if everyone recalls, we had the Steehill sidewalk project funded. So we're going to name, John's crew is going to maintain that new section of sidewalk from US two and Steehill Drive up to Evans Street. And in doing so, we're gonna, we intend to swap some sidewalk around. So. Currently, we, John's crew does not maintain this western portion of Emmy Street. So with the Steehill Drive, new sidewalk being maintained, we're gonna move the Venton Street sidewalks up to Evans Street. So the city will increase level of service along Steehill Drive and then also Evans Street. And the reason. For that is because obviously there's new connectivity here, but also Vent Street is a very narrow sidewalk. And our skid steers have difficulty. We have to use this really, really small skid steer. And it is cumbersome from an operational standpoint, and also the sidewalk was just a really important issue. Evans Street has a much wider sidewalk, so essentially we'd be swapping that. In addition, we will take on this gap on Burke Street. Historically, we maintained that, but when Osborne School basically went away, we decided to not maintain the sidewalk. They take more up on Titus. But we have found that we'd cancel where the water's even took this to this, but there's still students that attend the admin building. So we're gonna, we're going to make. John's crew is gonna maintain this sidewalk as well.
Yeah, that's Home Link. Home Link, uh, kids that do like homeschool, works with real school. Yeah, yeah.
So with this reconfiguration, we're actually going to increase the wing of foot of sidewalk maintained by a thousand sixty-four feet. Um, and one thing I do want to note to the council, historically, we've had issues with new front street. So this area between front street, between Division fourteen. Um, we've had issues with sidewalks not being maintained. Just to remind the council of our code. Our code actually requires sidewalks to be maintained by the adjacent property owners in the commercial area. It actually does not apply to residential, but the commercial. Whole areas, which include this area, um, is, is. It's an enforcement issue on, on staffs. And so we need to discuss that internally, but just kind of ramping that up. But so the issue that we run into is like, for example, last winter. We had a lot of snow early and then tree lighting came, well, these sidewalks were not maintained, so we went ahead and took liberty of doing that, but. We had that much snow built up and it's somewhat, I guess deferred. It takes operations, a lot of effort and has a lot of wear and tear.
Yeah. Tom, what's, what's your threshold for, uh, snow blowing, uh, snow blowing sidewalks? Like two inches, three inches, two inches? Okay. And have you guys considered, I know I brought this up before, but I've seen this in other towns that gets snow is the, the brushes, the, the brushes that you can angle the. Stiff bristle brushes that can take care of like three to four inches. And it just blows it onto the street or to an angle. You can angle them so that you can manage these narrower sidewalks. And I know that. A blower can't always manage these bumpy crazy sidewalks. I, I actually operated one for a while. In Cambridge, Mass, where like roots were coming up through the thing. And so. Old sidewalks that were bumpy, I was ripping out bricks and things like that. So. The brushes were really, the, the operator of the, of the, um, the, the developer who had the, was contracting for the city. They got the brushes just for these uneven sidewalks. They were actually able to deal with like, they would salt a bit of the ice and then run the brush over it and get rid of ice pretty well. And they could do two to four inches, no problem. So those are an interesting solution to a, a difficult sidewalk problem. And they could like angle so they could manage different widths, things like that.
Yeah, I'm more than willing to add in charge of operations.
Okay, one, one of the issues that we have with that knows it has that landscape buffer on the roadside. And so now you got snow on both sides, so there's really nowhere to push that snow to.
You kind of gotta blow it out.
And we actually do have a brush for a lot of, of room for one of the lockdowns and it's useful for like a first snow or maybe two.
And then you're done.
The usefulness.
Okay, now I'm glad you tried it.
Can you get around the power poles?
Okay, thank you for jumping in there. Cause they found that to be.
And then so that's, that's, uh, the update on the sidewalk. And then lastly, I just want to mention, so burn management, obviously we've had extensive discussions with, with the council about this. Uh, one. I guess path forward we're exploring is, is getting a volunteer group together through the Rotary. So there are some. Critical folks out there that need. Burn removal services that we can get through the volunteers that.
Yeah, I discussed that a little bit with, um, I think Councilman Lundgren. And we just came up with a kind of a very rudimentary policy saying it would be an online signup. And there would be a threshold trigger saying like, you know, if we had a three inch snow, we're probably not going to do burn removal. But once it gets to like a ten inch or, you know, we've had enough so that when the plows come through the street, the berm is going to be about a foot. Then we'd have an online signup and then you guys, if, if we decide and vote, decide that that would be part of the level of service, that would have to be decided first. Then you guys could go out with like a, a map saying, here's, you know, an optimized map saying, okay, you don't have to run point, point over town, but. Here's the signup, you know, and set them at it and have a, you know, obviously allocate budget to an employee to do it. But it would be a vote of council. So we'll develop that policy proposal, give it to you to look at before we brought it up and then bring it to council.
You, you, you're talking about, cause I know Anne mentioned it, uh, when she was, is adding a fee to it.
Yeah, we could add a fee to it. I think we could, or.
There's no way that we're gonna, I mean, we, we talked about that already. I mean, if, if you're asked, you're, you're talking about. Free berm removal, who wouldn't sign up?
Well, make it a minimum and not everyone, I think it'd be worth giving it a shot and. I don't see it as, I mean, we do free plowing in the streets, right? Who doesn't want free plowing in the streets? We already do it. I see it as a community necessity. If the citizens want burn removal, the citizen should get burn removal.
So just quick, quick math, we have nine hair driveways, so if everyone wanted burn removal.
Yeah.
And if we get a big snowbed, it could take up to, you know, fifteen minutes driveway. That's.
Oh, I, I don't think it'll be fifteen minutes. Maybe travel time, but I mean, I do it with my plow and it's like two minutes. Just go around and get everybody. I, I, people pay me to do it. I'm putting myself in the foot.
So if we were to staff up to even do a portion of the driveways, we don't have excess staff during the winters. And so we'd have to consider that. Also hiring seasonals in the winter time is very difficult, but do you have any struggle?
No, I hear, I, I agree. There's challenges and, you know, I know some of our, our pickup trucks have plows which could also do that. I just see it as a, you know, based on our mission. I think it's kind of an essential service for some people. I don't think any, everyone. And I think many people take care of it themselves. Like they have blowers that would easily do it. And I get it that when it's the worst period is when there'd be the most demand. So I get that too. And I mean, again, I charge for that with my own. Snow removal system, so I'm kind of shooting myself in the foot, but. I, I would say a third of my clients in town want that done. And I generally wait till after you guys come to do their driveway, so I get the berm anyway. But if you guys come again, you know, for buildup or slushy, whatever. I think it'd be worth to explore because I feel like not everyone would want it and it might be a manageable situation. And for the people who do need it and want it, I think it would be an extremely valuable resource.
I have to export, I know there'd be an operational side things, but also from an admin side, we have to. Really consider how much effort that'd be managing the calls and managing workload and.
What, and would have a money, it would have a, a dollar sign attached to it.
Oh.
I get that.
We already talked about that one once and it was a million bucks, but.
I just put in a sidewalk and then he can go on and plow.
Well, the nice thing is the rotary is this resource to test the waters here.
Sure, yeah, we could do that. And like an online.
It's not putting any burden on the. So that's really a great opportunity.
Sure, no, I totally agree. But if it's a service that the community wants, you know, the citizens.
Doesn't mean that a community wants, community gets, come on.
Kind of is.
No, no, it isn't.
People of this state haven't yielded their sovereignty to the agency.
You have in resources, Marco.
And if you, and if they need to be taxed for it and they're willing to pay the tax, they'll do it.
I will say, it, it could be cumbersome to staff up.
I hear that. I totally hear that, but I think it's logistically reasonably feasible. It's really.
Space too, where, where we're saying like the seams are added staff and they.
Yeah, yeah, I get that too. But if it requires another FTE and it's worth the boat, I don't see why not.
There's to be several FTEs.
Yeah, okay. About, we have the pickup trucks.
Yeah, so we've had this talk before, Marco. And you and I are on the opposite sides of this thing, but that's okay. Free opinions, but I'm telling you. You say the people want this. Well, yeah, sure they want it, but it's like they're not, uh. You open that, you open that list up. I just, I just can't quite get my head around. That much service increasing that and what Tom was talking about as far as. FTEs needed when the, the rest of the city is already stranded and needs. The streets clean, that we have time or legitimacy or justification for cleaning out fifty driveways. I just. It doesn't ring right for me. And I, I think you're oversimplifying the fact that it's going to take two minutes. Um, you know, I just don't think it's as easy as you're making it, but. Um, if there's some way to consider, wait a minute, wait a minute. That you can consider a small project maybe, but it's, you can't, you can't man up any more FTEs for that. It's something that has to be done somehow on a volunteer basis to see how that works, where the demand is, but. You can't make promises like that, even if people would like it, because people would like a lot of stuff in this town and we just don't have. We don't have the capability. I just, I just don't, yeah, anyway, that's my, that's my take. Thanks.
I, I appreciate your point of view, Zeke, but I, I actually do it with a truck and a plow and it really does take a minute or two. But if, so I, I guess my trouble is, I'm hearing. Two subject matter experts. With different assessments. You're saying it doesn't take that long. You're saying it's gonna, it's gonna require a pretty Herculean, Herculean. Herculean? It's gonna take a strong effort. Um, and it is going to be a drain on time and money and resources. So I guess. I'm not discounting your experience. I'm certainly not discounting. Your experience, so. I guess we need, before, I think we can have a more. Rootful discussion, we need to talk about where that delta's coming from. Yeah.
I just think if you can pay the city, you can pay private.
Can I speak to the delta?
Of course.
Um, as the city, we have to plan for the worst case scenario. Marco might be right. Some driveway might take two minutes.
Yeah.
I totally, I totally believe that. And I refranted that. But when we get a snowbed like Snowmageddon. Two minutes is not reasonable and we have to plan for that.
You're absolutely right.
Because I'm gonna commit to a level of service, we need to build that.
Yeah, and but back to Zeke's point, I would never put this proposal as a priority service. It's an afterthought service. So once everything's done, which could be. Three or four days after.
I think folks would expect it to be.
Well, but you would put that up front and say, hey, you know what? Regardless of what you expect, this is what we're offering, is a service. Once we're done providing our core service. This is a lowest priority core service. And I'm, I, you know, I'm, I'm trying to make this workable. Because I see the need and I feel like somehow we could meet in the middle and create something doable. Cause I think it would be a huge benefit to those people who need it. And like I said, of my customers, who I do their driveways or, you know. The, a lot of them, when you, you know, the plow comes by after I snowplow, they don't want it. They're like, no, no worries about it. I'll just hit it with my shovel or something like that. So I have a feeling. You said nine hundred driveways? I think we'd be less than half personally, and that's still a big number. So I get that.
Yes.
But and where do we put the snow and so forth? So it'd be great to maybe get the Lions Club to do it, a rotary. And then kind of maybe get a feel for how many people I want, or, or again, put out a survey, say how many people would want this.
See, see what happens with rotary taking it on and see how many calls coming in and see all that. Rick?
Rick?
Um, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, um. Okay, I just have a couple of observations and. So if we do burn removal with a snow blower. We can blow the snow into the residence yard.
Hmm.
If you do snow removal with a snow plow. We then have to bring that snow, if you can't push it into their yard because they have rockeries, whatever it may be. Then you have to bring that snow out into the street and it's against our RCW, for a better word. That. Residential snow cannot be brought back out into our street and dispersed down our roadway. So if you're gonna do it with a pickup and you don't have the ability to put the snow in the yard. Now you're doing what we tell every, every private contractor out there that they can't do. And that's bring residential snow out into our roadway and disperse it down our burn line.
That's a good point. And, and I don't do that. I just push it up onto the berm. So I just push it into the pile burn.
So if we're keeping in several areas in town, we, we're just discussing keeping sidewalks open. You can only bring it out of their driveway and push it into the existing berm for so long. And then the encroachment on the roadway begins or. The already cleaned sidewalk for pedestrian traffic now becomes plugged because. We've put snow into a berm that's rolled over into the sidewalk. Or it stays at the berm line for so long and then it encroaches on the roadway. So these are things that we need to figure out how to do different if we're gonna do it with a pickup. Is we can't bring it out and approach on the roadway, narrow the road, road, the travel lanes down. And if we're fighting to keep sidewalks open, we have to be careful not to plug the sidewalk with that.
Yeah, and that's, let me just finish this out, Mayor. That's a great point. What do you expect residents to do with that snow who don't have snow blowers? And that's been a big problem with us when we have huge snow accumulation. And I drive a plow. So I'm gonna keep pushing it out of the berm and consider it the city's problem. And that's why we gotta blow.
But that's where, that's where we create the city, that's where we create, create the unsafe. Travel lane issue is that you keep bringing it out of a residential driveway and pushing it into the berm. And I plow every single year for twenty-one years and I know that, that snow being brought out, pushed into a berm is sooner or later going to encroach. On a safe travel lane. And then yes, then we're adding further expense. With the city crews having to go out with loaders and dump trucks if we have them available. Do now move snow to an area. Now we have no place to put the snow. Residents don't want it back in their yard nor. So we have to find a way to transport the snow. It, it happens every year.
We need to move on. We've got to wrap this up. This wasn't intended to be a snow berm removal discussion.
Okay.
It was a broader policy. And we're gonna take five minutes and start our regular meeting in five minutes and give you a chance to use the restroom.
Thanks, Rick.
All right. Thank you guys.
Call the Leavenworth City Council meeting for October twenty-fourth at the border. Please stand for the break.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, roll call.
Sharon Waters.
Clint Strand. Marco Aurelio.
Tabor Locke.
Anne.
Zeke Reister.
All right. Anne Hesper and. Jason Lundgren have our excuse tonight. Obviously they would not be available, so. Uh, we've got a consent agenda. We've got one thing that will be scratched, number seven. Um, Tracy had some personal item come up, so she won't be here to do, we'll reschedule that presentation. Um, so that'll be removed from the agenda, but I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Uh, so move with the, uh, scratch. Second.
Moved by Tabor, seconded by Clay. And. Questions? All in favor, let me see your hand. All right, unanimous. Um, public safety reports. Purple Lake. I know you're up there.
How are you tonight?
All right.
The volume, okay?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. Um. So for the month of September, we did real well on hours. Um, nine hundred and eighty-one hours of patrol there with sixty hours, um, foot patrol. Um. Calls, pretty average. Um, hundred and twenty-eight offenses. Looks like, uh, fourteen citations. As far as vehicles. Um. Nothing, nothing really stood out. Um, for September. Oktoberfest got off and, uh. Was pretty much uneventful. I worked one, the, the middle Friday night. Uh, seemed like the crowds were up, but the problems were definitely down. And the next things we have are the autumn leaf debrief on Monday and. Christmas light planning on Tuesday.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have a question. On the Shalane County Regional Justice Center on tab sixteen. Were they, there's a lot of, kind of looks like, not a fraction, but like, um, for inmate race, for example. For Asian slash Pacific Islander, one point six one, what's the point six one?
I didn't expect that.
Um, I, I, we don't have anything to do with the jail anymore. I'm not sure.
Oh, does anybody know why it would be one point six one and next one is three point eight two?
So I believe ADP stands for average daily population. So the, at the, the percentages would be that they weren't there for a full, they weren't there for the second full day.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, questions for Purple Lake?
Corporal Lake, Tom Wacholder, I, I hate to put you on the spot, but I just wanna confirm we're on board with the, the snow call out, Republic Works, right?
Yep, I've saved your email, so I can start spitting it out when, uh, when the still, snow starts spitting on us.
Okay, all right, thank you. Just wanted to confirm.
Yeah, it's supposed to start spitting here.
Good, stop.
Right.
All right. Thank you very much.
You.
Nothing else from me?
Nope, I guess not.
All right.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. And we've got Mike here.
Good evening. So, uh, some of our general stuff we have going on, uh, we started our fall chippings. Uh, those guys have been out, they started on Friday or Saturday, I believe. Uh. We, we're still waiting on bus to come through for DNR. We had some stuff left over in our budget, so this one's on CCFD three. Uh, we wanted to make sure we get this down before the snow flies, so people can get rid of that debris. Uh, we're also beginning to, uh, transition from all our summer stuff. Uh, kinda got the slip water trailer out there. We switched over to got our snowmobiles there ready for winter rescue. Uh, although we're still kind of extremely clean right now. Uh, the other big thing we have going on generally, uh, is that we're entering in with, uh. It's basically Shalane County Natural Resources is heading it up, but we're gonna be, uh, cooperating with them to enter into a, a grant. Uh, that will fund a chipping program here in Leavenworth at our fire department. Uh, but instead of just doing a couple of weeks, it'll be a full crew that's on for twelve weeks. Uh, similar to what we've seen, like when I do that, they've had a lot of success. Uh, with that twelve weeks, we'll try to identify mostly public properties. Uh, that need treatment, uh, and go out, actually do fuel treatments, uh, chip, you know, remove the fuel chip it. Uh, and those kind of things. And so, uh, we're hopeful that we get the grant, but, uh, due to the risk that we have, uh, it's a. Huge priority for Chief O'Brien, so for at least the summer of twenty twenty-four, he has set aside money that, uh, if we don't get the grant. Uh, at least for twenty twenty-four, CCFD three should still be able to put that chipping through out, uh, which should, uh, we're planning June, July, August. Uh, to have those on. They'll also be available for state mobilizations, uh, and to respond to fires in the event that happens, but.
Mike, the grants from DNR?
What's that?
DNR grant?
Uh, well, it's, uh, it's done by the EM Department of, uh, it's the military. It's running the CDWG for FEMA.
Okay, have you asked DNR? Cause they're doing tons of cost share.
Yeah, no, we actually run, uh, they're helping to fund one in the spring and fall, and so they've been giving us about, uh. Yeah, around fifteen thousand dollars a year, uh, but this is gonna cost about thirty-six thousand dollars a year again. Uh, and it's a little bit outside of the scope of that grant program, but that's why we're hoping if we get the, uh, the grant. With natural resources, uh, that's gonna fund not just that chipping through multiple other things. Uh, it's around a hundred forty-five thousand dollars a year. The, the period of performance is five years. So overall, uh, we would get around seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Excellent.
If we get that one. And as we wrap up the last couple of grants we had, of course, Andy Smith had the grant. Uh, in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, that one's been wrapped up. We had another FEMA grant come through for fuel treatments, roof replacements, things like that. Uh, that one closed out last year, so we're hoping to get this next batch of funding and kind of keep that going. Uh, but due to the need within the area and the community, chief has been able to set aside some funding within the department. So if we don't get the grant. Uh, at least the first year out, we have the funding set aside. Uh, we have a lot of problems with hiring, trying to get those crews on without having funding secured, so.
Yeah.
Chief kind of had the foresight of, we'll put the money aside. That way we can hire the people. If we get the grant, that's awesome. If you don't, we're still gonna put the crew out on troops, get them out there. Uh, reducing that fuel. Great. Uh, as far as training, uh, last week, myself and Captain Tibbetts. Uh, we're in Shalane for the Fire Prevention Institute. Uh, we took the prevention track, so we just keep all of our certifications up to date. Uh, some new code stuff coming out, uh, nothing that's gonna be a huge impact here, but, uh. Nationwide, they are kind of solving some of the issues with, uh, energy storage systems, uh, and the lithium battery issue is coming up. Uh, again, we don't have an issue right now, but. As things expanded more and more, uh, of lithium ion batteries being used, there's just, the code has been written. And put into play, so that if we have commercial vacancies pop up, uh, we now know how to handle those in a safe way to kind of keep that from becoming an issue. Uh, as far as our response, uh, this was on the sixteenth, but so far we responded to five hundred and seventy-seven calls. Uh, that's up about fifty-three. We've been running about ten percent higher than last year. Uh. Been pretty quiet. We did have a, a train fire that wasn't on the last report, uh, on September fourteenth. But, uh, we were able to get that put out and then just affected the locomotive of origin. It didn't spread too rare. That's all. I hope everybody had any thoughts on.
Thanks, Mike. You did, how many roofs did you replace? I mean, you guys had a roof replacement program? It sounds really interesting.
It's like a fire removal program that, uh, we didn't replace anything.
I, I know you've granted it. You've granted the money.
Well, they, they would basically, uh, if they met all the criteria. They would get a contractor and there was a price match involved. I wasn't very involved with that grant, but I know that they did, uh, we didn't have very many. Basically, I had that wood shake roof fall by.
Right, right.
So.
Or a covered, people, there are people out there that have metal over wood shake. That's pretty dangerous too. But yeah, you know, okay, I was just curious maybe how, how much money was involved in that, do you know?
It was around thirty-fourteen.
Okay, interesting. Okay, that's great. That's outstanding work. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, next is comments from the public on items not on the agenda. But you wanna?
A million dollars.
That's all. Raise your hand. I've not seen you.
Can you find the name and address for this?
You're not, you're not.
So I was, uh, at six section and I was interested in, um, the, the telephone type of sprinklers. But I, you know, many times I can pretend I was, I thought that I, we didn't have a huge reservoir of water from the city. Uh, so if we had sprinklers like that going on, you know, whole water downtown to prevent fires. Um, do we have a line for that? Have you, did we say that we're gonna get out to two wells? And we're gonna be pumping the money also from the land. Did you mention that somewhere?
Uh, we, so we have two reservoirs. We have ski hill reservoir and Osborn reservoir.
Yeah.
That's a, that's actually a good point. We have the secret kind of demand if the sprinklers pull on the system.
Cause I was thinking, you know, all of us that live in town, if we hear about, you know, fire, we will probably be turning all of our sprinklers on our house and. And I don't know, yeah, at one point, um, our, you know, our water jump off. So I, I thought that maybe that's something that also. They, they have a fire, um, committee, you know, some each, uh, maybe talk about how much water we actually have and what, what.
We have approximately ten thousand gallons a minute that we could deliver per market. We did a calculation once, you and I, like at one of our meetings. It was around ten thousand gallons a minute total for our system. No, we can only, we can only deliver nineteen hundred GPM right now through our. Through our source, per our sources. In terms of delivering what, what we have reserved and that. Yeah. We can maintain fire flow. I don't know what the water system plan is. It was around, I think we, I, we talked about all the sources and everything. We came out, we were talking about, you know, each pumper, class eight pumper runs a thousand gallons a minute. We only have three of them in the city right now, so they were both running full steam. We still have some capacity left over based on our water storage. Yeah, and that depends. I mean, it depends on what level the reservoirs are at. Yeah, and how many people are messing with their stuff.
Yeah, it's a big problem.
Yeah, it's just, uh, it's just a, a whole part. That's all. Wish the deliverability would get better once we replace the ice cold transmission. Well, it's gotten better thanks to you, so I appreciate that.
I think shooting your furnace to the well going offline to those parents that we're gonna be improving the well.
Oh.
So it's just a temporary.
No, I think that's long, long term, you know, like if everybody in town is throwing the sprinkler on your houses, you know, to. Probably, we help them, you know.
How long does it last?
That might.
Does it last all year for the fire to get here?
The sprinklers help each town also.
That's a hundred percent.
If we all just wait till we need to do it.
Yeah, we'll run.
The, um, any other comments? All right, we are ready then to move on. Our first public hearing is the property tax and biennial budget review. From Chantel.
Um, actually, this is a all staff presentation. I'm last and Selby is going to start.
I am, and if you guys don't find a hundred percent from here, unless you really want me to stay in the component.
Oh, you're good. You're good.
All right, thank you, Mayor, council members. Um, now, we are in the middle of our biennium, so this time last year, we were going through and approving our. Fiscal year, calendar year, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four budgets, but we can also add one percent to our property tax every year by state law. Um, and it'd be foolish for us to not do that, even though it's only about seven thousand dollars, um, gain. Um. So, uh, we've together this presentation, Chantel took the, uh, took the, sorry, confused the wrong thing.
What?
No.
You can. Hold on a minute. Yeah. Or you have to click on the PowerPoint presentation. Well, we can have a try. Okay.
Oh, okay. Now we're good?
Yeah.
Oh, there we go. All right. So I've got the first part of this presentation for administration.
We're learning.
There we go. Um, Chantel convinced me to put this slide in here, and it's just to remind everybody why we are here. Um, this is the, the mission, core values and vision, uh, that the council adopted last December. So these are, these are the. These are the things that guide us as we do our work. So some brief, uh, accomplishments from twenty twenty-three. Uh, we created and hired a parking enforcement position for weekend parking support. Um, Stephanie's turned out to be fantastic, uh. But I found over time that Shannon is still very much acting as a parking enforcement officer as well and not as much as a manager. So she does manage Stephanie and she manages Pacific Security, but I will be asking the council to approve an additional, um, parking. Staff member, which we can afford through our parking enterprise fund. Um, I'd like to, to get, uh, approval for that by the end of the year. Uh, we've also initiated a parking study update with Rick Williams Consulting, um, which includes a pro forma analysis to begin feasibility for parking garage. You'll hear more from that, like, update at the end of the meeting. We created quarterly community engagement nights at the Fest Hall. Um, this was, uh, to complement the annual block party. So this was something new that we just started in November of last year, and we will be having, uh, another one next Tuesday, next Wednesday night on November first at the Fest Hall. Um, staff has also supported the downtown steering committee, Fest Hall Oversight Committee, Parking Advisor Committee, and the PRSA. Um, we supported the PRSA for the indoor pool feasibility study, including the September nineteenth public forum. Assisted with the space needs assessment for city hall on the library and the public works campus. Organized a city council retreat, um, and talked about the unfunded capital projects that we have. That two hundred and twelve million dollar number and started our, a process of privatizing where we should be focusing our time and effort. Uh, we hired Nash Consulting, um, for managing with minded heart supervisory training. So that was a six week program all day long. Uh, and then we also did another positive workplace culture training with Nash for all staff. Uh, we organized the first ever, uh, all staff professional development day a couple, uh, weeks ago. Um, so goals for twenty-four, um. Initiate the feasibility study for relocating the library to a partially demolished and renovated Osborne building. And expanding city hall to that library to the existing library space here in this building. That was direction I received from council about a month ago when I presented that concept, that study session. Uh, complete the parking study update and begin a garage feasibility study. Continue with professional development. We believe very strongly in, in, in supporting the development of our professional staff. Um, and this is the year that we have to negotiate a twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-eight collective bargaining agreement. Um, also have to negotiate a, a golf club, but at least with the Leavenworth Golf Club for your approval. Um. We'll have to do another contract with Shalane County Fire District Number Three. Um, and we'll continue working on identifying opportunities for developing workforce housing within city limits. And I would like to begin the process for our Leavenworth strategic plan.
Nothing on wildfire there? Is that part of the strategic plan?
Could be.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna go through the public works department briefly. Uh, again, there's comprised of five visions, six include administration, so, so take just a second. So first, we're gonna start off with twenty twenty-three accomplishments with public works administration. Uh, good news, all public works vacancies were filled and as a bunch of them left, we'll pull it staff. We did annual report strategic objectives for twenty-three. I gave a report this morning to all city staff that. Uh, I just gave a kudos to everyone in the public work smart. Most folks are on track with three twenty-three work plans, and that's. Beyond expectations because it's always good to have a flexible plan, uh, because there's no such thing as a perfect plan. Of course, some things are big kids, but nonetheless, doing well. Uh, kudos to Andy next to me. She developed the integrated CIP, which is the capital improvement program concept. Uh, performance evaluations were concluded for all public work staff and we acquired fifty Kodiak bear resistance choke, bear resistant chokes and deployed, deployed actually forty-three. So this is, I'll put it together. Uh, projects involved for twenty twenty-four, continue with identifying department-wide efficiencies, establish and update and set strategic objectives for twenty-four. Continue refining the ICIP, uh, and on just a general operations stuff of items within the department, cross training development. Terminal feasibility, EV admin, inspection vehicle, fully deploy our asset essential work order and asset management program. Our water division accomplishments for twenty twenty-three, ice cold transmission main section installed, other lengths roundabout. The icicle and ski hill reservoirs were inspected and cleaned and additional ski hill reservoir will proceed to do statements to event screen. General just requirements through department health or consumer confidence report list about the post, see website. PLC upgrade. Project started at the water plant, water supply in, uh, nearing completion. We hired a water plant supervisor, Chris Plankie. And we were awarded a FEMA grant for a system-wide generator backup project. And one additional item is, uh, we'll be moving forward with the Pine Street water main replacement. More to come on that. Uh, water division, goals, project and goals for twenty-four, rehabilitate well three. Complete security fence, take project, complete the icicle, load transmission main replacement design, clear our water source replacement feasibility study. Update rate system development charges and begin procurement process for the system-wide backup generator project and service all of our clay valve, valve system line. Sewer division accomplishments, uh, fog, as fast oils increase, that program was reinstated after being idle for some time primarily due to COVID. Insert ultrasonic level sensor and refine screen. Order a new cat skidster loader, snow blower, fine tune our BIP system, that's the phosphorus removal system at our wastewater treatment plant. Uh, completed our wastewater treatment, excuse me, we completed the wastewater treatment plant upgrades. And we're also nearing completion for our phase three sewer line project. And last but not least, the waterfront restroom sewer force, force main was successfully relocated. Terms of sewer division goals. For next year, fully implement rent maintenance workflow for wastewater treatment, uh, lift station assets. Proceed with general sewer plant update, which is funded by ecology, update sewer rates and system development charges. Proceed, I will clarify with phase three priority three wastewater improvements, that's design phase, uh, structural. Clarify that, upgrade K O A lift station. There's a number of accomplishments for the streets utilities division to deliver some equipment. Uh, I will clarify that I noted I was highly anticipated delivery of a new sweeper line today, but we did not take delivery yet. It will be here within a few weeks. So just clarify that. I will remove legacy street sweeping waste on file, the cemetery side, change wasteland and dumpster, future street sweeping waste disposal. Completed citywide water beer audit, repair approximately ten water leaks, and then there's some statistics on the cemetery, which. We are still, we're still completing variables, so this data is, the only is current is when this slide is together. Goals and objectives for the two streets utility division for next year, maintain current realistic PRR, identify replacement timelines. Uh, start inlay brand base programs, continue forward progress on the first street pedestrian plaza project. Execute residential street preservation program and take delivery of our new equipment, sewer backer, uh, sewer back new truck, new pump trucks. I apologize, there's two blocks. So update stormwater garbage drains along with system development charges, proceed to stormwater comp plan update. Please, you know, style, excuse me, complete the ski hill sidewalks project phase two. Um, uh, phase one correction. That's just a, um, closeout, no. Rebuild the existing sidewalk along Central Avenue, T I D grant for that and career engineering services for steel after transportation, please to project. Parks Division. Accomplishments twenty-three, multiple instances of graffiti cleanup at restrooms, install family system to A Street Restrooms. Accomplishments twenty-three, multiple instances of graffiti cleanup at restrooms, install family system to A Street Restrooms. Start the neighborhood playground committee for the playground upgrades at Osborne. Till adding topsoil fertilized reseeded front street park, hired one full-time, three seasonal parks employees. Three in the infield at Enchanted Park, along with other in each of Enchanted. Goals, projects for parks next year. Structure playground Osborne, design walker park parking lot improvement project, design center expansion project. Design a replacement lines for the park building, front street park upgrades, citywide picket table upgrades. Facilities, goals for twenty-three, install lighting upgrades, the panic shop, install four for the circulating fans and the security treatment building at wastewater treatment plant. Seahawk series paint project, nearing completion. Mural rehab in progress that system completed. Selected I Pro Building Services for city janitorial, installed cool tile flooring, touch-up paint on the frog. Assisted with installing and implementing cyberlock system. Facility division goals and projects, expand cyberlock system throughout city facilities. Zigo basement exploration will resolve water issues, cemetery shop restroom upgrade and city hall. Heart replacement.
Been busy.
I I feel like Clint following Sharon. But nonetheless, our small department, our accomplishments for this last year were issuing so many permits. And not just development permits, we have done more conditional use and land use permits than any time in history. So there's just been a lot going on, and of course, we've had some substantial changes in staff at the same time. We've issued and started site development for Alpenglow Phase Three. We've started the Leavenworth Meadows Buildings. The project has increased in scope from three hundred rental units to three hundred and sixty-eight. So a new revised mitigated SEPA determination will be issued next week. We are anticipating. We will be issuing the new hotel, a bouldering gym, and a hot springs, all different developments on different properties behind Safeway. We anticipate those all getting issued before the end of the year. Although the building permit for the boulder engine may be later. And we've completed several large developments, including the Leavenworth Gardens project. That was substantial amount of work. And of course, the adventure park opened this summer. We've brought on three private consultants to help support staff with this work. We've also hired new employees. We've completed several presentations at the retreat, the council meetings, and we've done a special webinar with Department of Commerce. Next slide, please. Our goals for twenty twenty-four are to formalize our mission statement and develop objectives. We are continuing to go paperless. So for twenty twenty-four, that's that will be the ultimate goal to complete that process as much as possible. Develop and issue updated flow charts. They're called SOPs. And we've done several more just in the last couple of weeks, so we're well on our way to getting our twenty-four goal achieved there. We're cleaning up the filing system and closing out building permits. We'd like to switch this to a quarterly review. Right now, we did it last winter. We're gonna be doing building permits again this winter. The primary goal there is to make sure people are closing their building permit, getting everything finalized. It's good business. It means that what was constructed is safe and sound and been through all building code reviews. You can always build beyond the building code, higher than the building code. But any case, it's helpful part of the process. Finally, we want to fill our open this planning and building job positions, which industry ride across the state is gonna be a challenge for many departments, so if we can accomplish that, I'd feel very successful for the year. That's my presentation.
Thanks, Willa.
And I like Willa, it's hard to come after Tom. I have so many divisions. Finance Department twenty-two accomplishments. So I don't know if everyone knows this, but the finance staff are the ones who do take care of the front desk and phone systems. Our goal is always to provide excellent customer service with phone and in-person contact. Although I don't have numbers on the in-person amounts that do come from the door. I do know that the phone calls are eleven hundred plus per month on average. And that is managed on a daily of at least three people. There's four of us in our department. And Andrew here is a wonderful assistant whenever we have shortfalls and due to sickness or vacations. We have completion of our annual reports, which you're all very aware of. I apologize if we're not able to make it tonight to the study session, but they are rescheduled already for the second study session in November. So for annual reports, it includes the city's financials, the lodging tax annual report, the washstop non-discrimination report, and the Upper Valley Parking Recreation Service area. In addition to completing all those reports, I do have to have these posted at several federal and state agencies, so all of that will occur when they're completed and official through the auditor's office. And then completion of the audit. That's the city's twenty twenty-two financial federal accountability. That is what the auditors will be reflecting upon when they come in November. And we also completed the audit report for the Park and Recreation Service area this year. For twenty-one and twenty-two. Budgets is a big portion of my entire department. And so we have accomplished all the twenty twenty-three quarterly amendments. We do have one more coming that'll be in December. And then twenty twenty-four, we have produced the Upper Valley Parking Recreation Service Area's budget and the administration of that committee agency, however you wanna look at it. But that is staff that is managing that for that agency. Day-to-day operations, we handle the payroll, accounts payables, receivables, contacts, grants, and utility billing. Fifty-two million dollar budget this year. Just to give you perspective, our twenty-two hundred population prior to twenty twenty. Our average budget was ten million a year. So we are doing exceptionally larger, a lot of that is grants and major projects.
When did that jump?
Prior to twenty twenty, we were averaging about ten million.
And so then we did like a step kind of growth annually. Wow.
Well, a big one was the wastewater treatment plant. That was a twenty million dollar project by itself. But that one has been, it's been taking us three years to accomplish it.
Okay, that.
On top of it, we do multiple millions of dollars in street projects. We have lodging tax, we have parking now. There's just a whole lot of.
When your budget grows by five hundred percent, it's kind of worth looking at.
It's it's big for our little town. I believe actually the fifty-two million dollar budget is larger than East Renatch's. This year, I did get the ClearGov online digital budget book blog out. If you haven't visited it, the live link is located on our finance department page. You can go take a look at that. It's currently still only doing a single year, so if you look at it now, it's twenty twenty-three. I have twenty twenty-four cloned and ready to go live. I will probably add that just prior to our December meeting, just to ensure that both are available to the public if they wanna produce those. We assist and maintain a variety of citywide-supported documents. That includes our financial policy, the demo schedule, the equipment replacement, the six-year transportation improvement plan, the capital improvement plan. And I have the pleasure of maintaining all of our small and attractive assets. Those are things like computers, laptops. That are attractive to walk away is what the audience calls them. In addition to all that, grants and loan management, we're currently monitoring for fifteen separate allocations projects. We can make that sixteen. Thank you for getting our emergency loan from the Public Works Board from Henry. Did you click off? I don't think so. Our projects and goals for twenty twenty-four, continuing with our day-to-day operations of the finance front desk best change service. We will do a completion of the annual reports for twenty twenty-three for the city's financials, the lodging tax, the washstop non-discrimination, and the Upper Valley Parking Lab. We'll also complete audits for twenty twenty-three financial federal accountability. And for budgets, we will maintain twenty twenty-four, which is already built. But next year is the year to create twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six, as well as the PRSA's twenty twenty-five budget. And in my spare time with my staff's assistance, I will work on updating our city's utility rate study, which is going to take a significant amount of time from myself and Tom in particular. I'm currently looking at cost allocation, and if that plan needs an amendment, I'll be bringing it to the city. That is a plan that we adopted, I think about seven or eight years ago. It has not been amended. We use it and we implement it for our budgeting every three years. But it might need some amendments, so I'll bring that to you later this year if necessary. We are on track with implementing the electronic timesheets. We're gonna be training for those here in November. With the staff, we'll do our first behind-the-scenes test for December with a plan to go live in January. I will be seeking continued options. This is something I've been looking at for probably a decade or so. There've been a lot of issues with paperless accounts payment processes from an audit standpoint, as well as theft and vendors maliciously submitting things that don't get a close enough eye with them by the proper channels. So I'll continue to look at that, though. There are some new programs. And then the big one, and Selby mentioned this on earlier, union negotiations. I will be so right-hand in that and running all these scenarios for the ramifications of those as they are the best thing for the youth. Before I jump into the Admore Property Tax, which is just a couple of slides, does anyone have any questions about all of the accomplishments or goals?
I'm really impressed, honestly, in the grants and all that. Do we have part of our mission for the future for your twenty twenty-four projects? Do we have like an increased grant pursue type of thing going on?
Well, within the capital improvement plan, we identify all the different projects that the staff has and within that, it does specify where the funding is supposed to come from. And so as you look at those fine details within that plan, and you're gonna be bringing the updated plan in the next month. Yeah, so hopefully in the next month, we'll have that in front of you, but that does identify each of those future projects. And where the shortfalls are and where we need to see grant.
Because I mean, based on what I've seen, you're already doing that. So I'm really excited about it. I was just curious if it was a formal pursuit, a formal mission that we have, or it's just something we naturally do. Because it'd be great to have it in writing in terms of a.
Project specific. For the project, we don't need a grant, right?
No, I totally get it, but.
Could go after a grant if we wanna lower the costs and save some money for another project that's a couple more years down.
Right, or for something that's existing that maybe we could get a grant for. Totally get that. Okay, thank you. Yeah, that was awesome. I'm really excited.
The CIP is a six-year plan. That is designed off of the twenty-year plan. Gotta make it a little smaller to bite size it.
Yeah, and then you can jump into those potentials for, because grant searching is a job in and of itself.
Great question. Any others? Why are we here? We are having a public hearing. I'm not sure that we actually officially noted.
This is a public hearing on Admore property.
Okay, perfect. So what can we get? One percent. What is that one percent? For us this year, it would be seven thousand eighty-five dollars and fifty-one cent increase spread across the city. Our assessed value levy rate is zero point nine one by a four currently. That typically does not adjust very much with our particular agency. This increased request is from seven oh eight to seven hundred and fifteen thousand. It includes new construction revenue, which we get regardless. And that is the thirteen thousand two two seven eighty-five. There is no annexation revenue this year, and there is a very small refund revenue of six oh one thirty-three. We currently have no bank capacity. Our twenty twenty-four budget estimated seven hundred and sixteen thousand nine twenty-nine. And the total available requests with the new construction and the refund revenue is seven twenty-nine, seven six nine fourteen. The popular chart that councils in the past have really liked to see, I wanna point out that this is twenty twenty-two. And you will notice down here at the bottom, the highest one happens to be Renachi in that year. Leavenworth was thirty-nine oh nine. We were second from the lowest with Shalane being the lowest one at that moment in time. I wanted to point out a little thing, if you're looking at the details of this. Cashmere is the only one who does not have a fire department. So up here, fire districts, all of them have a fire district. That is why their amount is much higher for the city collection itself. But if you took this seven thirty-three and looked at, say, Shalane's three eighty-two plus the fire district, it's very similar. This is twenty twenty-three? Note that I'm always trying to grab a similar vibe of a home. In this particular year, Cashmere is now the leader. And Leavenworth is in third place. So we're not the hottest tax, we're not the lowest tax. We're pretty much a sweet spot kind of in the middle. Which I think a lot of people think from a property tax perspective because our homes are valued so high that we pay so many, so much more taxes, but in reality, we do not.
Well, and a lot of our taxes, a lot of our taxes are paid for and not voted on by high property values that are not residents. Should we get to vote on like a Toyota and get a Cadillac?
Yeah, we have a huge amount of our tax coming in from that downtown core.
I totally agree with that. That's great. I think people don't get, that'd be a great chart to look at.
And of course, all the details are there. Who's actually taxing? The city of Leavenworth is four hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Four thousand one hundred and sixty cents. The city is not the major contributor to taxes. It is our school districts. It is various other agencies, but the schools are the ones who are definitely the most in all of these. What's left to consider for this year? We have a twenty twenty-four Admore property tax itself. We have to vote on that. That will be entered November fourteenth meeting. It is due to be assessed by the number thirtieth, so you do have to take action. You may choose to take the one percent. You may choose to not take the one percent and bank it for future capacity. We're not gonna talk about that necessarily tonight unless you want to, but that will be the decision that you need to make at the next meeting. Twenty twenty-three final budget amendment with a salary schedule and our rate and fees. Those will be brought to you for final approval at December twelfth, twenty twenty-three. You will have the rate and fee schedule redlined again for you at the next meeting in November, so that you can see all of the final staff recommendations. We have also incorporated the utility rates for that. The twenty twenty-four first budget amendment, that will occur in April of twenty twenty-four. What that means is anything that is in twenty twenty-three that was either a major capital project or a ongoing major professional service agreement will be finalized for twenty-three, and whatever balances are remaining will roll into twenty twenty-four. And I will do that internally. And then the amendment itself will be necessary for any council. And then the amendment itself will be necessary for any council actions that you may take from basically December on. And if there were any issues that I noticed that need to be addressed. The biggest issue I notably noticed is our insurance.
Yeah.
At a hundred and thirty percent basis from twenty twenty-two, our total insurance bill is going to be close to seven hundred thousand dollars.
Is this something nationwide, or could we shop around a bit, or do you? And I knew you, I know you have an answer.
Was provided, this handout that I gave you, this is from our insurance company. They are wanting to give some explanation for these buying of these costs.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Also, I'm writing for you. Yes.
To get you.
It is increased claims nationwide, worldwide catastrophes that are causing this. My understanding is it's not just the United States that is feeling this, it is other countries.
So it's not a competitive bid we could put out to get a better view.
It's not that we've had excessive claims in the city of Leavenworth and we need to mitigate that. We do have claims, but it is definitely, it's everyone and it's risk pool.
It's a correction.
Yeah, it's, it's big. Uh, notable potential targets for twenty-four is the legislature is reviewing this one percent property tax cap. It has been in place since I believe it was nineteen eighty-five. So it's been a really long time for our community. That one percent may not be that big of an impact for us because our bread and butter here is retail sales tax and our hotel motel tax. But for most communities that are not tourism, and that's most, they rely on property tax, and you can only imagine when your expenses, your employee costs, your public safety costs are going up at three to seven percent and your property tax only goes up one percent. You have to think about cutting programs, cutting capital project, adding and finding new taxes. So I feel grateful that we are in the beauty that we are in and that we have this lovely school that brings in all these different revenue streams. They're so much more powerful than the stock.
They want to move that to three percent, right?
Yeah.
That thought, move that to three percent.
They are working on, right, they need it to three percent. That doesn't mean you have to take it.
Right.
Just like they don't have to take that one. We will have that option to take up to three if it passes. I foresee, though, if that passes potentially, I believe that it would end up in the November ballot for the electors to possibly vote on. They could kill it.
That's a statewide vote, correct?
It would be.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Because the legislature can cast names, but if it actually implements a tax, it has to go back to the voters. And then if it passes that, it's still probably going to take another year for that to implement and the assessors, because by the time the November election happens in twenty-four, the assessors are already done with their preliminary work for twenty twenty-five.
So it's twenty twenty-six.
So I'm, I'm thinking it's still a few years out if it passes.
But they'll start budgeting for that.
That concludes our presentation and our public hearing. We take comment from public if public has any questions.
So how do you budget for that seven hundred thousand dollar pieces? Insurance. Pass it on to the taxpayers.
It'll be really tough. It is spread across all of our funds.
Okay.
Because it's a combination of things. It's property.
Right.
All of our buildings, our facilities, that is actually our, a large one for us. The vehicles, that's the second largest one for us. Our claims is actually only third. So a bulk of it is gonna actually hit all the departments because of the buildings and vehicles and equipment.
So any facilities that lodging tax pays for, would you move some of that money out of there?
Mm-hmm. Lodging tax does not get hit with much insurance.
Well, you got the train station. Yeah.
Yeah, it's not much.
Not much, but are you, are you moving any of that from that to help pay for this, or is my question?
I will increase across every fund.
Even that fund, okay, that's my question.
Yeah, every fund will be a thing.
So it'll be like a share, a cost share.
Yeah, and, and it's all driven based on those percentages, you know, his, his takes a huge hit. His sewer plant just added nineteen million dollars in improvements. It's sewer infrastructure debt. That's a big one for the sewer plant. The water plant, it was millions of dollars, water plant and, and all of the wells and all of that. Things like the general fund and lodging tax take on the festival, city hall, Osborne, bicycle station.
Yeah.
And then we spread equipment across all of those fronts as well.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, because equipments don't make any money. No, with their liabilities.
True.
Their, their money business from today, they get.
And they have to be insured.
Yeah, they have to be insured in their liabilities and we have to, but they do, are part of a fund that goes, gets paid for by cert. Taxes, sales tax and lot and property tax. No, property tax. You don't think so? No, that isn't the service.
Are there any other questions or comments from the public? On this? Being none, we'll move on, we'll close this public hearing, move on to our second public hearing, which is a continuation of the multifamily tax exemption program. And again, we'll, we'll give the staff report and then we'll take comment.
Thank you, Mayor, council members and public. This continued hearing is from our last city council meeting. We will be also continuing this hearing to the November fourteenth. Uh, city council meeting, seven P M. And hopefully be able to make a motion and a decision at the end of that public hearing on that date. In between now and then, the city has been working with Erin Vonville at the Shalane County Assessor's Office. And with our Burke consultant, we will be doing a presentation at City Hall November seventh at six P M. It's just a public forum. It'll be an overview of the whole program and a time to ask more questions. We hope that at the fourteenth continued hearing, we can provide a summary of those questions and responses, take any final public comment, and again, the goal would be to take action with the city council at that time. So with those opening remarks, uh, mayor and council members, I recommend we just take additional public comment. I can take any new questions down. We can address those at the forum. And like I say, continue to the next regular meeting with the council. Thank you.
Thanks, Flott.
All right, so do we have some public that would like to comment or add new questions for consideration? Kim.
Yeah, we had several, yeah, we had several questions after the last meeting as far as the territory.
Just let me interrupt and just say, because this is a public hearing, I need to have you state your full name, address, please.
Yeah, Kim, I said one, two, three, eight, zero Village View Drive, Leavenworth, Washington. So after the last hearing, we had, there were several questions that came up. Um, including, you know, the taxable area and so forth, and we were told at this meeting, there would be more clarification on that. So now it sounds like that's being postponed until November seventh. Um, and then that only gives a public, you know, three or four days to come up with any further questions, or if they can even attend. Now you're getting into the holiday season, so I guess I'm wondering what happened to the questions from the, that we asked during the last meeting?
Yes, those are being um put, responded to in a te- technical memo. So it'll be kind of comprehensive. Um, but needless to say, the taxes are mostly felt within the city limits. However, because of the evaluations are reduced countywide, uh, the impacts affect countywide residents. Uh, there are existing programs already in place with the city of Wenatchee. And I believe Erin Vonville will be able to talk about those specific projects and the impacts that they have had countywide. So yes, the impact area is primarily the city, but also countywide.
And so, and so in the meetings being pushed or further presentations now being pushed to, I'm sorry, you said November seventh?
Yes, we'll have a forum, a public forum at City Hall there, six thirty on November seventh. That's an additional meeting.
It will sound like it's going to be kind of the full presentation, so will that be available to people that can't attend throughout town or, 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 I mean, kind of short notice, will that be available via Zoom as well?
It is a Zoom and in person both, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, there is an ad in the Echo and an ad going in the Wenatchee world, as well as the legal description. And Kim, I can send you the link. It'll be on the city calendar as well.
Okay, I'll just look at the city calendar. That would be great. I just wanted to clarify that the tax will then be broader than just the city of Leavenworth taxing district. It'll expand beyond that.
I think, I think that, that the tax itself isn't spread to those outside. It's just that it'll affect other districts because they won't get the revenue that they would have gotten with that property. So it's not as if outside the city would be sharing in new taxes. They just wouldn't see the values in those other districts, if you know what I mean. The county wouldn't be getting those tax dollars, so it'll be foregoing. But it's not, it's not that they, that the taxes would get spread out to them outside the city.
Yeah. Yes.
So the tax, the tax implications would stay to the city of Leavenworth residents. But people outside the city of Leavenworth depend on those taxes for whatever programs they have. Those would be taken away from them, is what you're saying then?
The, the districts, the, so the land values still increased, but not to the same extent. So the districts that would have been receiving a higher tax revenue, um, that is adjusted. So yes, so fire district and other districts are impacted by that. The actual shift of uh value goes to the city residents and they pay that shift back.
Okay, so the burden would just be um increased to this, limited to the city limits. It's just the taxes, the other counties would have received, like the fire departments or whatever services they have, they wouldn't get those tax benefits or those increases anymore.
Well, they wouldn't get it during the time of the exemption. And when the exemption ends, then it would go into effect. So the memo has quite a few details and charts and graphs, that kind of thing.
And so that'll come out, then the chart will come out, it'll be on the fourteenth, I'm sorry, the seventh.
On the seventh, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, I think Rona was next.
Oh. Well.
Should I go?
Yeah, go ahead, Rona.
Rona Baron, two thirty-eight Center Street. Um, I'm still having a little bit of a hard time understanding the cost to uh, per household. So I think, I think we have about seven hundred dwelling units in the city limits, is that right?
Well, it would, it would get spread to all, including commercial, though. It's not just the residential.
Okay, well, anyway, just, I, just for math sake, uh, one estimate was it would be about ten more dollars a year, and if it's seven hundred households, that's only seven thousand dollars. Is that the kind of numbers that we're talking? Are we talking numbers under ten thousand dollars a year? I just don't think I get this.
Uh, well, the, yeah, the number is not too high, but the, how it was calculated was on assessed value. So that slightly under ten dollars figure was if your home was four hundred thousand dollars. Or your property, I should more accurately say, because businesses with a million dollar assessment would be, you know, more than that. It would be you know, two and a half times, yeah.
I, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is what amount of money would need to be raised for the tax exempt, exemption? If I can't get there by figuring out, you know, seven hundred homes times ten dollars, which I understand doesn't work, how much money are we talking a year?
Oh, okay, so that was based on a project value. And so the way to think of it is, what are the full assessed value of the city? And I think Chantel has provided that number in the past of all of our properties. And then divide that by four hundred thousand.
I guess I'm trying to figure out when the developer gets a tax shift, you know, that shifts away from the job. Yeah, like just that basic thing. Am I, we talking about ten thousand dollars or a hundred thousand? I just don't have a sense. Does anyone know?
Yeah, that was part of the Excel sheet that the consultant had provided, and I'm, I don't have the number off the top of my head, so I'm.
Okay, so I think.
That was, that was based on, uh, again, a rough eight million dollar project, right, that would be exempt. And then we get spread out to the rest of us.
Yeah.
And then that was about ten dollars per four hundred thousand dollars of assessed value. Um, and so that's and again, that's an eight million dollar project.
Yeah, and it was in the tens of thousands of dollars. It wasn't in the hundreds of thousands of tax savings.
Okay, well, I, I think it would be helpful for everyone to understand what the amount is. And then the second, the second um question I have or comment is, when, you know, you're, we're looking at this proposal, where did it come from and how much was it altered to dovetail to Leavenworth's very specific situation? In other words, did it start as a boilerplate somewhere and now it's been modified for us? Or was it developed, you know, completely by scratch by the planning commission? Or what are we looking at? What's, what's the genesis of it and how have we adjusted it to work for us?
Well, this um code amendment has been in discussion for a couple of years, and it was based off of state law. Um, Department of Commerce has a model ordinance that they provide. Um, I'd look at the housing agenda to see exactly which cities we also referenced. I know the city of Wenatchee was certainly one of them. And there were three others that I've looked at, but it's been several years since we actually started the discussion.
So is it your, uh, is it your sense that you started with something from the state and it's been modified a lot? Or not modified much? Again, it's just kind of a general question.
Yeah, there, there are just a few areas that we can modify. And so we, we've, this code follows very closely with the state law allowances.
And so they may work on the west side, they may not work as well here. That's what I'm getting at, is I'm wondering how much we can be specific for Leavenworth because we're such a unique place. So I think you've pretty much answered that question.
Yeah, the state only allowed this program to be viable for cities our size in the last two years. So when it became an option, we talked about it with the housing committee at various meetings, got mixed reviews, it's come back to the table a couple of different times. And just this year in particular, at the end, the summer, the city council said, hey, we really want this, we're gonna move it forward. And we've had a couple of workshops with the city council and now the public hearing process and the additional public forum coming up.
Okay, so that's excellent. I have one last question, because there may be other people, and maybe not tonight, but so you said the city council wants it before us. I would like to ask, you know, three members, again, a sort of a random number from the city council to explain exactly what it is that they think will favor the town, because from what I can analyze, um, you know, uh, anyway, there's a long list. You've all seen the list. People are writing you notes about it, letters. Um, I don't understand the benefit, so maybe three council members who are there that want, that want it to happen could briefly state what's great about it. I just don't get it.
Rona, yeah, we're in a public.
Outside the, right, that's outside the scope of a public hearing. You get to make your comments or ask your questions, but it's not to poll or to ask questions of the council.
Okay, I can write them a separate email and they can respond to me that way, right?
And yeah, you can do it other ways, but yeah, it's not a public hearing forum for that, so.
Yeah, okay, so my, my general comment is, as I've analyzed uh the costs, the benefits, um, the idea of everyone having to pay for it, especially because it's. The idea of everyone having to pay for it, especially because it's between eighty and a hundred fifteen percent. Of median income, which would mean it could support a household of ninety three thousand dollars. Um, the fact that the contractor, one of the contractors in question, or developers, I'm sorry, Widener. Is already charging the same rate that he would, could charge with the tax, tax exemption. Um, and households making less would help pay for that. I mean, it's so, it's so riddled with holes to me. I just can't see my way clear. To think that this particular thing is a good solution for our town, you know.
It's undecided what that uh area median income would be allowed. And we talked about that last time, that it could be below the eighty and not the eighty up to the one fifteen. So that's still.
Especially since you're not watching.
Well, okay, I I, you know, those are the kinds of things that right now for me, don't pencil out. So um, like I said, maybe uh council members can talk to me privately about what they like about it. I just, I don't see the benefits.
Rona, thank you so much for your comments. Zeke?
Yeah, so thanks, love. Um, one thing, I just want to kind of get a review. There's these two options. You have a time span for the rental units. If, if we, if the developer wants to, you know, provide percent, percentage of rental units. And there's also a time span that's different for home owned units. Can you uh give those back to me again, what those are and what the time spans are?
You bet. The rental program is for twelve years. And if the city council wanted in the future, we could amend the draft code. We can amend the codes to allow for an extension of additional twelve years. Um, so that's an option in the future when we propose it this first go around. And then for homeownership, it's a twenty year uh program. But they are required to work with a land trust type of organization. And those organizations typically require a ninety nine year lease. So anticipation and what our consultant has said that they see in other jurisdictions is. Those become more permanent, but the tax exemption just gets them kickstarted with the twenty year.
Okay, and what was the? I could look this up, but I just since I've got you here, the percentage as for the twelve year program with rental units. What's the required percentage that needs to be affordable?
Twenty percent is. And then for the housing, twenty five, but the twenty year program.
Okay, alright. And if I heard that right, the, in either way, with this rental or homeownership. The developer continues to pay the tax on the land that these are on. They just are exempted from the building, the building that's, that's been designated affordable. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Alright, great.
And keep in mind too, um, that the land value will increase because the buildings on it. So the, you know, the other districts will get some benefit. They just wouldn't get the full benefit. Until the exemption was done.
Yeah, that's, I was gonna ask, yeah, so it's, so like the hospital has, has bonds or whatever you call them, and the fire district has. You know, there's money out of our property tax that goes to the fire district and there's money that goes to the hospital. There, they would be impacted because they wouldn't receive, like say, if it was for the homeownership, the twenty years, they would not receive. The money that they would normally have gotten on those building units for that time span, right?
That's right. So when you construct on property, the value of the land and then the value of the structure. Go into the assessment of the tax. And so when you pull out the building value. Uh, the tax is gonna be less, collection's gonna be less, and that'll go to those districts at a lesser rate.
Is the uh, is the school district also impacted by that? Are they exempt? Are they, they still get their full client? Or do they in the same boat as the hospital and the uh fire district?
That's a trick, that's a trick question, because we've kind of been through that a couple of times. I want to wait for the memo.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah, because they, they get their taxes uh specially passed generally, you know, um, through. Through voter initiative. So I'll leave that.
So those are voter initiatives are for a specific amount of money that then gets spread out to all of the people within it. Within that district. So that doesn't change the local taxes when, the part that would change may be the state taxes.
I'm looking forward to the memo that'll outline all that.
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, and that memo is ninety percent drafted, so if I can issue it sooner, I will.
This, this one, you gotta state your name and address.
So I had a big question, I think that's, I can't be still, but um, so. My question a couple of weeks ago, um, actually, it was about a month ago, so I didn't get a chance to ask it again, uh, last meeting. Was just the scope of the tax exemption on a project. I'm thinking particularly about the Weedmark project. Because that seems to be one that maybe they're thinking they would like this tax exemption. And so my question, Lilith, is does this extend to the scope of the whole project? You know, that, because it looks like a pretty expensive, it's, um, and specifically an expansive project. So would this be all we have to state, that we be uh then uh eligible for this tax exemption?
Yeah, um, the way it was um explained, and again, this is one of the questions. We want to formalize in the memo too, just so it's black and white. Is that all the buildings on that parcel? So if the Leavenworth Meadows were to participate, I would anticipate them. Putting the building or buildings that they want in the program. On a separate parcel of land and then managing those. And the reason I say that is because they're required with the program to provide twenty percent. Of all units. Well, twenty percent of three hundred and sixty eight, pretty substantial number. And a major impact. So my anticipation would be if they want to participate. They will uh just pull out the building or buildings that fall in the program.
So what would keep them from, say, they, you know, they um, you know, the, the twenty percent is gonna be what, seventy five, maybe out. Interfering them so they can take that um tax exemption throughout the whole project.
No, then the whole project would be twenty percent of the whole project. You can't scatter those and take a tax exemption. Unless you're providing twenty percent of that. So it'd be seventy some units would have to be affordable.
Right.
But it would have to come through here and we would have to agree to it too.
Right, okay, but no, but I was, but my question is, what, what would be the scope of their exemption? If they had the, the, um, if they had like, I don't know what, uh, seventy buildings or, you know, whatever. But if they had them spread all through all the buildings, because they don't have to look different. I mean, they're encouraging them to look the same, you know, to me.
Right, right.
Uh, so where they just said, okay, we're just gonna spread it through the whole complex. All the buildings are gonna have, you know. Um, what would, what would prevent that? Just using the, you know, do the exemption through the.
They could apply for it for the whole thing, but again, we don't know what that would incorporate. Because what the cost would be of those buildings, what the value would be of those buildings only, we don't know.
I understand that. I was just trying to find out the scope of what would be available for that exemption. And, and it could be.
Yeah, they, they have about, uh, they have fifteen buildings proposed now. And they, the values of the buildings, I think four of them are townhomes. So pull those out, because those are gonna be different. But the multifamily structures run between four to six million each. So eleven buildings at four to six million each. But they're, they're not, they are not interested in doing the whole project in the program. Just to clarify that. So, and they have not submitted anything, so. And if they were to submit something, it would go to city council and they provide that feasibility, showing the impact. And the city council would determine whether or not they would approve it to be in the program. So that impact analysis is a critical part of this program. And it allows every city council to make a decision based on the circumstances of the community at that time. And so that's gonna be most helpful for the program, I think. Uh, Linda has her hand up.
Hey, full name, full name and address, please, Linda.
Linda Colacerto, I live on Ski Hill in Leavenworth. Tagging on to the Widener project, so is, is, are they also going to be getting uh affordable? If they do, the M F T E, would they get affordable housing incentives, for instance, higher density? Those sorts of.
No, no, they haven't applied for any of that. Their building permits are, almost all of them are already in.
So, and I guess I'm a little confused, so they don't have to go through another public process to add, do a cardinal change to their project?
Uh, no, they don't. They can do an amended um site plan, amended uh CIPA determination.
And so, no more public process?
No, no more comment. Well, we'll reissue the CIPA determination. And send it to the contacts that we have on file of record. And people can make a comment on the new CIPA and there's an appeal timeline that will run with the new CIPA.
Of course, nobody can afford that, but, okay, um, some comments on the M F T E. So as I understand it, there's no guarantee that um any of these uh affordable homes. Either rentals or owned homes will necessarily have to go to Leavenworth workforce?
We don't regulate where they actually work. The program only regulates their income level.
So that seems to be not the best deal for Leavenworth with the. Leavenworth taxpayers paying for people from outside of the area. Another question I have, you, you guys used four hundred thousand dollars just as the example for a home. Uh, it would seem more reasonable to use the average home cost in Leavenworth as the basis for it, maybe? Because I don't know of too many four hundred thousand dollar homes in Leavenworth. And then there's no, um. There's no chart that gives, you know, any sort of indication as to how those numbers are gonna go up over the twelve or twenty years. It seems like you could use historical data for inflation and escalation to see how much that tax is gonna go up over that timeline. Because it could go up quite a bit. That seems to be, would be good information. And it's, it's, it, it troubles me that J Lark did a report on the program. And they are, find it to be inconclusive in its effectiveness. And it would seem to me we wouldn't want to embark on something like that in such a small city until that can be a proven. Entity to J Lark anyways. Just, they weren't that impressed with what they know of the program right now. So I guess that's my comments. Thanks.
Thank you, Linda. Rona, did you have additional comments?
Yeah, I do. Uh, I forgot about the piece that um Linda just brought up. About who can purchase or rent these places. So just to clarify. There's nothing to stop them being rented as second homes or purchased as second homes. As long as the affordability quotient is met. Is that correct?
No, there can't be second homes. They've gotta be a primary home. They've gotta be live. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so it has to be a primary home, but no guarantee it's workforce home.
There's no guarantee, uh, as long as they meet the income, there's no guarantee of where they work, if they work, right?
Okay, thanks.
They qualify.
Kim, one additional comment?
Yeah, it's a quick, a quick one. So if the taxes are gonna be, or the benefit of the taxes are gonna be taken away from. Whether it's the school, the hospitals, the fire department, wherever outside Leavenworth. Do they need to weigh in on this program or does Shalane County have to have any approval rights over this? Or can, can the city of Leavenworth enact this? And then regardless, their taxes are basically reduced and they lose that revenue.
That's correct. Yeah, the cities have the authority under state law to implement the program.
So the fire district could lose funds or the school district or the taxing authority. So you're, so tho- those, those could be taken away then, is what you're saying?
It'll be reduced throughout the exemption time period, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, alright. I have one. Okay, um, something that between uh Linda and Rona said. Um, so if you qualified for a house, you lived here in that house. Okay, and then you decide you're gonna buy a house in Wenatchee. So, and live in the house in Wenatchee and rent the house that you bought affordable, what happens? No, but they already were.
No, it's gotta, it's gotta remain a primary residence.
Yeah, so there's an audit.
If, so for instance, if it's on the land, if you're talking about ownership, if it's a rental. I mean, it's.
No ownership.
So if you're talking about ownership.
Yeah, I'm, I live in the house. I qualified for. Later, I decided to move, but I'm still keeping it, but I'm gonna rent it now.
No, you can't. And men has that in the lease that they have because they own the land. So men, for instance, in their, in their community land trust model. Leases the land to them and in that it spells out, it's gotta be your primary residence. So if you decide to leave and move, you don't get to rent it, you have to sell it.
So if I get an affordable house, I don't own the property?
No, you, you have a land lease.
Oh, I've never heard that before.
Yep.
Okay.
That's how the model works.
Yeah, there's an.
You own the sticks, you own the drywall. You own the fixtures.
Own the property.
You don't own the land underneath it.
So, do they take your, your, don't you, what, you have paperwork that says, this is my house? Like pay property taxes on it and blah, blah, blah.
Yep, you pay the property tax on the, on the home and the land trust handles the land. And they charge you a, um, a modest lease fee for that land. But in that lease spells out the conditions of what you can sell it for, for instance, so it stays affordable.
Okay.
And also that you have to live it.
So that was kind of like the three houses on Cedar.
Would have been.
Yeah.
I think the one thing that nobody mentioned though is like, let's say the Widener does the twenty five percent. Their seventy five percent picks up this additional tax though. The entire city picks. Yeah, and they're in the city, so their others, seventy five percent of their units would get, pay a portion of this tax back. So they're getting a break, but they're also paid. Yeah, so it has to pencil for them. You said eleven percent is what the city gets?
One percent of the overall tax.
Eleven percent, is that what it?
Yeah, yeah.
So I pay five thousand each year. Eleven percent goes to the city. It's not that hard to calculate. What the city would give up on four units.
Right, right.
It's, it's just not that difficult. It's just what happens down the road, which we can't answer because we don't assess the property.
One other question, is this true? Uh, let's see, what was it? Okay, let's say the white, let's pick on the white air apartments. And they put in twenty five percent of the, the multifamily tax, twenty five or so. Of the, the multifamily tax, twenty five or seven, or no, it's twenty five.
Twenty, I think, I was wrong.
It was twenty.
Twenty five if it's.
Yeah, that's twenty years, it's the twenty years.
Yeah, but that's homeownership.
Right, and they're buil- they're not building ownership, they're building a door rest, so they could qualify for the twenty percent at twelve years. No, but I'm talking about twenty years. They can't, they're building apartments. Okay.
You're only twelve.
All right.
That can be renewed.
And they, they, and we would. We would pay the twenty percent. Property tax. For twelve years. Multifamily tax for twelve years.
We would pay it for twelve years, we would share it for twelve years.
And so what is the thing with the twenty years then?
That's if it's a ownership. So let's say.
But don't they own it? They don't.
So no, that's hu- ownership like the men.
Okay.
Where you, you were actually buying the house.
The unit.
What, what we're, what we're shifting is the value of the constru- of the building.
Of the building.
Yeah, we're shifting that tax increase based on the value of the building. They're required to provide twenty percent rentals or twenty five percent ownership. But it's the building. Tax that's getting shifted to the city residents. And the reduced land value that's impacting. The districts, the taxing districts.
And so the bigger the percentage, the more. I mean, the bigger. The number of apartments.
Right.
Then that twenty percent changes, you know, goes more, more that uh MTA fees that we pay.
No, no. No, Sharon, it doesn't matter, if they provided fifty percent of the units as low income. It's the building structure, the value of it that's being taxed shipped.
No matter how many units are in the.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh Zeke, can we make you the last question?
On, right, yeah, let's do that.
So, talking about homeowner, homeowner u- units. There was a mention that. That typically what happens here is they turn it over to a land trust. As in, say here, mend. So if that's the case. That's the case that men takes over, takes that over. Widener still owns the land, it's just that, it's just that. Or does, does, does men, even though they manage it, they don't end up owning the land anymore, because that's Widener's, that stays Widener's the entire time.
Widener's not going to do a homeownership project, they're not interested in doing a homeownership project.
We know that.
It'll be a different.
Yes. We know that that's not in the works.
Okay, so we're talking.
There would have to be some other developer or. Men themselves doing the development, but they wouldn't need to tax ship, but anyway.
Okay.
I, I, I think we're mainly looking at this as a rental. Program.
Okay. All right.
Let's close the public hearing on this.
No, Mayor.
To the public hearing. I, I, I know, I know. We're going to continue it to November fourteenth, we're going to have um special meeting on the seventh.
Yes.
Um, for the public as well. And so we will continue this one ongoing and we will. Move on from here to the next public hearing on a continuation of our bed and breakfast amendments.
Thank you, Mayor, we had very few public comments on this at the last meeting. We needed to continue this one for noticing requirements, so um. That's why we're continuing it, I'd just like to open it up, the intent here was to amend the bed and breakfast regulations. To reduce the number overall, citywide. Or limit the number. And the planning commission has recommended a four percent cap. Um based on uh the number of single family homes, so as our single family homes increase. That will increase as well. In any case, that was the primary change, there are other changes to the regulations. I won't jump into a lot of details, because like I said, there weren't a lot of public comments last time, so we'll just open it up for public comment. And this item again will be continued to November fourteenth for hopefully a final. Action by the city council. The fourteenth meeting is at seven P M. Here via Zoom or at City Hall, just to put that on the record, with that, I'll turn it over to you, Mayor.
Okay, are there further comments of some that may not have gotten a chance or something else that's risen up since? The last comments that were gathered?
My only comment, as we discussed last time, I would prefer seeing a distribution limitation versus an overall limitation. Other words saying, per block, per street, per square area, there can maybe something. Um but I'm not in favor of the four percent, I think it should be as high as that, that's fine with me. But having it distributed, so there's not entire streets or neighborhoods that are all bed breakfast, that would be my, my contribution to a comment.
Thank you, Marco. I believe Linda had her hand up first.
But I just wanted to confirm, we're still at one bedroom in ADUs and two bedrooms in, in uh homes?
Yes, that thing's changed.
And then also it would take effect immediately?
Uh the, the termination of the conditional use permit or the B and B permit. With the change of ownership, it was recommended by the planning commission to take effect immediately. Staff continues to recommend uh one to two year grace period.
So where are we at with that, or, or what, what's in the, what's in the? Proposal right now?
Well, no, um. Planning Commission has made their recommendation, staff is making a slightly different recommendation. City council will get to decide at the conclusion of the public hearing. Thank you, Linda.
Marco, um I, I mentioned this last time, and Zeke mentioned it too, I agree that there should be. Some concern for distribution. And I hope that that's an amendment that can be made. And my other, my other comment from before was. To consider if you are mostly concerned about auxiliary income. And workforce housing, the people I know that have one bedroom B and B. Um use it to supplement their income and still work in town, and the people that have. More rooms, well, of course, now it's up to three. Um across the street from me, she used to be a teacher and she doesn't, she's not a local teacher anymore, because she runs a three bedroom, you know, business across the street. So I think that if you're, if you're trying to encourage workforce housing and yet people let people have a little more of an income. That one bedroom makes more sense, and as I said before, what about five percent instead of four, you'd have less rooms. You'd have less impact in neighborhoods, less paved driveways, et cetera. And you'd have more people being encouraged to be part of the local workforce. Instead of just to make a business out of their property on a residential street. Um and I know I mentioned it before, but I want to mention it again, just for consideration, thank you.
Anybody else?
Me?
Yep.
Question. Uh you said that there, if I understood correctly, you said there was a staff recommendation and a. Planning Commission recommendation, and I think we heard the planning commission recommendation, what's the staff recommendation?
Um staff was just recommending that the expiration of the B and Bs. Go into effect in twenty twenty five. Give one or two year timeframe for. Current. Bed and breakfast operators to determine if they financially need to sell it. Or if they retain it and. When they sell after the expiration goes into effect, they won't be able to sell it for as much because the. Bed and breakfast approval will not be transferred with the ownership. So it has a big financial impact, for example. Um we have a property on Commercial Street. Which has a historical B and B, they are offering that property at one point two million. Just a house. I think the assessment is too high, but we'll see if it sells. Um we've only had one inquiry, it was approved as a three bedroom, it had a code violation. Because they were operating as a four bedroom. So it's unclear to me actually how they did the assessment to come up with one point two. But the home itself, without the business, the ba- bed and breakfast. I am sure would not. Be av- valued at one point two, so that kind of impact. Staff is recommending that the current B and Bs have an opportunity to. Realize or not.
Thank you.
Linda C, did you have one more question or comment?
I did, um. You know, you've made a lot of code changes in the last few years that affected everybody's property values. And. You, and unless you want to give a couple of years to everybody to react. Once you make a code change, then I don't think that this is very equitable, that you're worried about. Someone, that house is not worth one point two million dollars to start, so it's. It, it's just to me kind of. Inequitable. Thanks.
Zeke? You're on mute?
You're.
There we go, okay. Uh first off, the new, did I hear right that they would, we're limiting these um. Uh any ADUs, they want to be a bed and breakfast to one bedroom, is that correct?
That's a proposal from the planning commission, yes.
Okay. And I would just say that. I kind of definitely share the, I think. The overall picture. Why we're changing things around. Or trying to make things more, you know, create more housing for people. The idea of, of delaying uh. Delaying the. Ownership of the, as a bed and breakfast, once they decide to sell, that, that they have to, it doesn't go with the sale. I think that's a real strong incentive that, that could possibly, it allows it to turn back into a residential home again. Whereas if, if, if you leave that on there and say, well, you got one to two years. There's nobody that's not going to continue that as a bed and breakfast, it's just not going to happen. And so that continues to stay off the market for. Somebody else to have it as a home, it's going to continue to be a business. So, I guess, I feel like the planning commission made the right move in making sure that that was. If you decided, once you had it, and you were going to. Uh sell it, that the license to be in bed breakfast does not go with the sale, so that's my only comment. Thanks.
Thank you, Zeke.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and, and close the public hearing on this, and I mean, we're going to continue this one as well.
Yes.
The fourteenth. And hopefully have a decision time and, and that's when the council gets to debate all of those little particulars as well, so. We'll continue this to the fourteenth. And move on now to resolutions, ordinance, orders, and other business.
Yeah.
And we've got action item resolution fifteen twenty twenty three, which is our legislative priorities. Um those were shared with you, um we added, as I. Passed out before, the Association of Washington Cities uh priorities as well. Added to those, um. And we've already started uh working our legislative uh contingency here with these, so. Um but uh. I would entertain a motion.
Wait a second.
I'd like to comment and have a typo fixed on it and edit. So under fire prevention and mitigation. Uh second paragraph. It said the city shall work with legislative partners to approve fire hazard mitigation legislation. To seek and get state federal agencies to put some of the approved fire mitigation funds. Into the immediate area surrounding the city. So that should say into the city and the immediate area surrounding the city, that's the first one. Because it shouldn't just be the surrounding area, it should be the city and the immediate surrounding area. The second typo, I think, where it says. Two sentences down, it says the city shall pursue collaborative approaches to community wildlife hazard reduction. I believe that should say wildfire, yeah, so wildfire hazard reduction. And from uh where it says into the city and immediate area surrounding the city, because I think we want. We would like uh funds to come into our city and the immediate area, so those are the only two comments I have, thank you.
You can do those, easy enough.
I have some questions about exhibit A, I'm not thrilled with it. It has, it has.
Can I ask? Can I ask why you didn't say it when I introduced it the first go around?
Um, I don't know.
Okay.
That's my answer, I'm sticking to it. I don't know. I, I, maybe I just didn't catch it. But when I read exhibit A. There were some questions I had. Number, the first dot. Let me see. One minute, in the city limits. Second dot. Where the very last part says, um, where's the first sentence started it? RCW eighty two dot fourteen dot five thirty, to provide additional flexibility to cities and counties. And modify the legislation to allow for the use of these funds for workforce housing, serving up to a hundred and twenty percent. I'm kind of like with, oh, I think Zeke mentioned this, the hundred and twenty percent. That's the people that make the most money, right?
That's a higher, higher than the, than the.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess I'm thinking workforce housing. I, you know, I'm not sure, it's a hundred and twenty percent everywhere in this. That I looked at. And so why are, why are we doing the hundred and twenty and not the? You know, the, what, what thirty or the eighty?
The um for rental housing, the, the eighty is. Great, because you go up to the one twenty and then you can maybe get something in there, but this is for homeownership opportunities. You won't touch anything. At a hundred and twenty percent of AMI will not qualify for homes. So this is, this is the ability for us to have that first time homebuyer homes. For people as well, so that's one of the things that's missing here, besides the affordable rentals. We also are missing a first time homebuyer home. And this is the opportunity to provide some of those.
And so the, are we think, are you saying all three levels don't have equal opportunity to end up with a home?
All three levels?
Well, the eight, one twenty percent and the.
I'm saying, I'm saying that if you don't, if, if you make under a hundred and twenty percent, there's no opportunities to buy a home. Right now, if you don't make significantly more than a hundred and twenty percent. Our median home prices now are seven hundred some thousand.
Fifty one.
Well, how can you even rent them if you? If, you know, how can the lower incomes rent if they can't buy? At that, at that bracket? In that kind of a house, that.
I, I, what we're asking for is an opportunity to use funds to help subsidize housing. To be able to bring it down so that it's affordable to people at up to one twenty percent for a homeowner.
So what funds are we using?
What we're asking for is to use these state funding sources.
Okay.
To create new funding sources that will enable us to be able to address the housing. Gaps that we have up to a hundred and twenty, because again. This isn't just rental, this is the homeownership. And if we don't, then we don't have any teachers here or nurses here or other. Beginning professionals and all of those are going to be emptied out of.
Okay, I don't really understand it, so I'll just say the same when it comes to the bread.
Other questions? Can a motion to, you got something, Zeke?
Yeah, um. Yeah, um, I was gonna just ask. Since Leavenworth isn't dependent on raising, I understand the need for a, a three percent. Cap or three percent spectrum. On property taxes for someplace like Rock Island, Waterville, you know, Mansfield. But here in Leavenworth, with our sales tax, uh, it seems. A bit irrelevant since we're not gonna go that. I mean, like, I certainly wouldn't vote, uh, wouldn't want. Anywhere near that to happen for us to even have the capacity to increase our property tax up to three percent. Um, can we specify, uh, by any chance in this recommendation or as our? Priority issues that Leavenworth be exempt from raising their property taxes more than one percent?
No. No, we wouldn't exempt ourselves. What you would do have, have is the option to, to not raise them, and that's always would be your option. The thing of it is, this isn't, this one, if you notice, it's the Association of Washington Cities that's moving these agenda, and we. Typically support the Association of Washington Cities agenda because it's good for the entire group of cities and not just. Leavenworth focused, so all of those ones that are listed under Association of Washington Cities. Are what they have developed, working with the cities around the state as their priorities. And we've generally supported those, not just, this is an area where we're not just. Looking out for Leavenworth, but we're, we're also, and, and as your Association of Washington City Board Member. I will be advocating for those other cities. That are dependent on property tax much more than we are.
Okay, alright. Just wanted kind of a clarification there. Great.
I would entertain a motion. The Leavenworth City Council moves to approve resolution fifteen dash twenty twenty-three. Legislative priorities for twenty twenty-four as amended in this meeting.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any other comments? Questions? All those in favor? Let me see your hands. Closed. Okay, it's four to one. Sharon voted against. Alright, next item. Get back to my. Okay, this one, resolution sixteen twenty twenty-three, the emergency. Uh, declaration of emergency to repair Pine Street Water Main. Tom?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Florrie, council members, good evening. This action item is associated, as Mayor Florrie indicated, with a declaration of emergency that. The mayor issued on October twelfth. A little bit of backstory, so on September twelfth, we experienced a water main leak on Pine Street on a old seven hundred foot section of sealed water main. That's in between Titus Road and First Street. Rick's crew went to repair the leak. However, they were not successful. Attempts to repair the leak only resulted in more leaks, so they had to essentially backfill a leaking water main. So subsequent to that. Uh, to proceed and open up funding avenues. And, and also to emphasize the emergency that we had in place. Mayor Florrie went and issued a declaration of emergency, and not only did that elevate. The priority of this project, but also opened up funding opportunities with the Public Works Board. I'm gonna let Andy speak to that. I'm a subsequent action item. Uh, nonetheless, this is resolution just to formalize that declaration of emergency. Uh, as of October second, associated with that Pine Street Water Main.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve resolution sixteen dash twenty twenty-three. Declaration of emergency to repair Pine Street Water Main.
Second. Moved by plan, seconded by Sharon. Any other questions? Alls in favor? Let me see your hands. Passes unanimously.
Thank you, council.
Next is the action item immediately.
Yeah, as Tom indicated, um. We, we declared the emergency and because of that, it opened up funding opportunities for emergency projects. And so we're excited to announce that we are successful in getting a public works board emergency, uh, loan for this project. Uh, which will be coming to the next council meeting for approval, but. Uh, we actually anticipated the entire thing was loaned and it ends up, that is fifteen percent grant. Eighty-five percent loan, um, and it is a twenty year loan at one point three percent. So in order to repair this main this year, still, this is a really big deal for us and we're really excited to be able to report. So, um, we have RH two, who has been under contract for the Pine Street Phase Two Study, proceed with the design of this. So the water main layout and then all of the associated appearances will be constructed in a location, um. That is in coordination with the, the corridor improvements that we'll be making as part of that Pine Street, Pine Street Phase Two. Project in the future. Um, so anyway, we, we bid this project and we received seven bids. Um, our low, our low bid was from HCon of Kiala, um. But the total that came in under the engineer's estimate, the engineer's estimate was three hundred forty-nine thousand dollars and they came in at. Three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. Um, so just to kind of reiterate what Tom said as well, the emergency nature of this project, um, was twofold. One is the unreparable water leak that we currently have. And second, that winter is quickly approaching and just knowing that the failure of this main, um. From our staff perspective is inevitable. It's that much more challenging for us to repair this water main in the winter. We don't have the option to put in temporary water surfaces. Uh, so anyway, we're, we're really excited that we have the funding. We're gonna be looking forward with it. Um, this project is gonna have a really accelerated schedule, so assuming that this is awarded tonight. Our contractor is anticipating starting next week. Um, and they have twenty-five working days to complete the work, um, just depending on the weather that we have. If we need to do a winter shutdown, we will have them paid. Next spring, but that being said, no matter what, we will have impervious surfacing that they can fly against. We'll probably have CDF controlled density build that they can. Fly against for the winter, um, so it will not just be left in rock. And then we also have reached out with all the residents, um. I, I know for a fact that they got their letters today, cause someone came in with a question on theirs, so. Uh, residents have been notified and the school district has been notified.
I understand why this is still a super aggressive timeline. We're trying to beat mother nature. What is your level of confidence, one to ten, that they even have a shot of getting this done before the snow shuts us down?
Good question. An eight? I feel pretty confident that the, the engineering design team that we have on this is well versed. They have a fully fleshed out temporary water service plan. Um, so that we can run services to all of the existing meters, keep everyone in water. And then we'll, we'll construct the main in the same location as the existing. So really what that means is we're not going to run into near as much rock excavation of the things as we would if we were to just put it in a new location. Adjacent to the existing main. Um, I know weather's coming. I, I know that we can't predict that, uh. But I'm, I'm hopeful and I feel pretty optimistic that we will, we will continue until it's in the ground.
Yeah, and if we get early snows, we have a big snow blower. No, we do.
Put it in the neighbor's yard. Um, yeah, so my question, Andy, was, I didn't quite hear how. So the water's gonna be disrupted for those folks on East, East Pine. What's the plan to supply water to them? How does that work?
Yeah, well, route temporary water service to them, so that means ground laying a pipe, like a HDP pipe that will be plumped into each meter and then, um. Luckily reconnect it to the water main to serve. There's actually twenty-nine houses and three businesses served off, so. The, the main wraps around, uh, so it comes from Titus, runs down Pine, goes up Fur and goes down Cedar. And then dead ends there, so there's houses on Cedar that are impacted as well, and then they're not on Pine Street themselves. Um, so we'll replumb that temporary service line into the main to feed all the other houses on Cedar without actually having to run the service directly to those meters. Um, so that way we can keep them in water. There'll be pretty minimal disruption. Really, they'll just be. Uh, connecting them to the temporary service and then reconnecting them to the, to their permanent service once we're done.
And that's freeze proof?
Well, yes, in the sense that we will have water running in order to.
Okay, I just, I figured you had a, you had a plan.
Are we upsizing the price?
Uh, yeah, it'll be an eight and a half.
Yeah, it'll just be continued.
Did that answer your question, Zeke?
Yeah, so the, the last one was, how do you keep it from freezing? You're gonna have it insulated or whatever?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, it's not water flowing.
Okay. That's the, that's the trick, okay. Alright, good. Thanks, Andy.
Is there a timeframe?
Oh, they have twenty-five working days.
Twenty-five days, okay.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna be a bit, we're, we're, we'll get it, we'll get it, um.
Oh, yeah, oh. I'm sorry, I, I do want to think that, so as, as part of this, the accelerated schedule, we are allowing them to work longer days. So they are allowed to work from seven AM till eight PM, and residents have been notified of that as well.
Are they gonna work Fridays?
I'm, I'm assuming so, but I have yet to confirm that.
We, they're not in the downtown, they're not in the downtown.
It's a part of the commercial. That's why I'm asking.
The roadway.
I would rather they work Friday.
The roadway will be fully closed through there as well, so that's the intention, we'll shut that, that section of road and just let them.
I, I got nothing against people, trust me. What, what I found interesting was in there, in that bid was the huge amount for traffic control. That was way over the engineer's estimate.
Next, we're on the next project already. We'll get to that.
Yeah, the repaying one, same, really weird. Okay, sorry, wrong one. Well, at least, you know, I, I looked at. Okay, um, I would entertain a motion.
Well, let's just hands up. Oh, well, or is that just me?
Oh, yeah, thank you, Sharon. No, I just. Didn't mean to interrupt the flow. I just needed to excuse myself. Thank you for the evening.
Oh, okay.
Thanks a lot, you.
Thanks. Okay. What, in the motion, do you want HCon added in there and the dollar now?
Oh, yes, did you, this is draft.
Yeah.
It just says to be determined right here.
No, no, I gave you, there should be a foundation is in the back of the thing I just gave you.
The thing in the.
In here. I'm sorry, that was part of our rush process here was.
Gotcha.
He's gonna read.
I'll just read it. Okay, okay, City Leavenworth, uh, City Council moves to accept the construction bid. And authorize mayor to execute a contract with HCon Incorporated for the Pine Street Titus defer. Water main replacement project in the amount of three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Second. Moved by T-Bore, seconded. By Marco. Any other questions? All those in favor? Let me see your hands. Passes unanimously. Now the one that the funny amount for. Okay.
We have an explanation.
Yes, Andy, give me the explanation.
Yes, this is the twenty twenty-three asphalt concrete and brick paving patching project, uh, citywide project, um. Primarily it's addressing, um, areas where we cut our asphalt. Also, there is a couple of, um, water meter vaults that we need to adjust and. Um, and, and report the sidewalk around those, and then there's some trip and fall hazard removal locations, um. So, yeah, as, as you probably saw on the bid tabs, the biggest discrepancy between, um, the engineer's estimate. And the contractor's bid was in traffic control, so I actually called them today and just. And, and just asked for an explanation, and ultimately what they told me is their experience working in Leavenworth. Um, they don't wanna take any risk with pedestrians. Being in the work zone, and so their anticipation is to have pretty substantial robust, uh, pedestrian traffic control as well. So they're anticipating in these locations where we're working on the papers, um. That they'll have people, spotters on site to redirect people around the work zone, um, and then, and then, um, also as part of the commercial HMA line item on here. Um, so for, for all of the patching locations, I did kind of write more specific requirements done to. Plate that, so after they go in and excavate the roadway, um, what they've historically done is just put some. Big glass or like some two by fours that they laid, just so cars could get into. This lower spot and come back up, and so we, we have scripted requirements for how they need to leave that over make between when they excavate and when they pay. So I think all of that contributed to much higher traffic control costs than, than what we've previously experienced.
Don't we like steel plates?
Yep, that's what it's, that's right, yeah. Um, so ultimately, we had just the one bid received from JM Pacific Construction of Moses Lake, um. That totaled two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars and ultimately, we are going to break out the Schedule A. Um, the city streets portion, and approximately forty-seven percent will be funded by lodging taxes. These are the portions that are in the downtown area, the, the brick favors, the trip and fall hazards, all those. Um, and then the street fund will fund the remaining portion, which, um, when we broke it out, was about fifty-three percent of that total Schedule A. And then the parking fund, um, has separate work that's specifically in the flooring parking lot. Right now, there is a section, there's like one parking stall equivalent, like thirteen feet wide of grass. So, um, the parking department asked that we have that repaved and, and actually make it a designated parking stall, so. That's what the sixteen, the sixteen thousand dollars from the parking fund is, is going for.
Is that the pool parking lot?
It is.
Okay, I know what you're talking about.
Sixteen thousand for that? It's pretty awesome. It was a tree, right?
Uh, there's not a tree there.
Okay, well, why was it never paved?
I don't know. There may have been a tree there previously.
Might have been a tree in the past.
I think there was previously, and so many leaves were in the pool all the time.
Anyway, that's great.
So, no, no sales tax on Schedule A?
No, Schedule A does not have sales tax. It's supposed to be included in the bid item, how great.
Okay. So a couple of these are on Live Street, right? One's on. Between the two of us, huh? No, I know, I know. It's just, it shows why we need the CIP.
Yes.
Yes.
Some of it looks like the rebuilt street that they didn't do. Same here.
Infrastructure.
Well, you guys have been doing a good job cold patching, so.
Yeah. Okay, alright, I would entertain a motion.
Leavenworth City Council moves to accept the construction bid and authorize the mayor to execute a contract with JM Civic Corporation Incorporated. For the twenty twenty-three asphalt concrete and brick paper patching project in the amount of. Two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Second. Moved by twenty, seconded by Sharon. Any other questions? Being done, all those in favor? I see all the hands, so passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Yep. And now reports. Sharon?
Unfortunately, Tuesday's, I went a lot of places. Okay, October eleventh, I helped with the school lunch, tax program for the United Methodist Church. I also went to the Women's Exchange Monthly Meeting. Our guest speaker was Craig Sorenson, who owns with George Delvo. The Boulder Ben Glassworks, and it was really fascinating to hear. All the work they put in it and time and care and all their. You know, it was, it was really interesting, and they told us Tuesdays are the best days to visit. On October eleventh, I attended the Fire Commissioners Meeting at the Fire Hall. Captain Mike Smith's report is under tab sixteen, and we heard that. I want to add that there was a, they call it a pinning ceremony before the meeting where firefighter Simon Kaiser. Was appointed from a volunteer firefighter to a career firefighter. And those are, those are so much fun to go to because their parents are taking pictures and they're so, they're proud of their young man or young lady who is now. Fire Department Fireman. October twelfth, um, Upper Valley Historical Society slash Greater Leavenworth Museum meeting, no report. October fourteenth, the last weekend of Oktoberfest and the beer tapping ceremony. Carl was the keg tapper at Vulcan Festal and gazebo. Troy Campbell, the chamber president, you know, the, as the water, the water, the beer is spilling over, he's got mugs and he's filling. And he had two in each hand, and only does that because those things are heavy, but two in each hand and headed out. To give them to a couple of people in the crowd, and this one guy was just like, right next to the guy ahead of him, and he just looked like, oh. So when it was, um, so I always take mine out to the crowd anyway, just tell them my mouth has not touched it. I don't drink alcohol, blah, blah, blah. And so I decided to go and give it to him, the guy that didn't get it. He was so stinking excited. He actually kissed me on the cheek and wanted a picture with me. So, I mean, that, those things are the fun things. Okay, um, on the sixteenth, I attended the Schlein-Duckel-Telk Board Meeting. And, um, I didn't write anything about that. Okay, you guys are lucky. On October sixteenth, I also attended the Mosquito District Board Meeting, and Jenny Mullis is going to be out in town, and she asked me. This isn't real long, it's not the whole page, it's half down here. If I would read her report, which is her annual report, so. She said this year had a good sized snowpack which melted quickly in May with two high peaks in the river then. The larviciding work of two part-time assistants and the manager, all working independently. Provided excellent control within Leavenworth. Backstella's Thering Genius or something, um, subspecies, something else. Famously known as BTI was the main larvicide. Only a few records of two or more mosquitoes were made within the city. Only a few records of two or more mosquitoes were made within the city. Some were due to plastic holding water. Residents were informed as such, while those at the city parks were probably due to a few survivors from the high water sites there. One repeated complaint from Hilltop Drive in the urban growth area was traced to a eastern just west of Titus Road. After its treatment, those complaints ceased. And lastly, here, trapping has conducted every summer to monitor the success of larvicide. This year, four separate sites south of the city caught over a hundred mosquitoes in at least night. In at least night, which is the worst in the district's history. Three were associated with the Icicle River, while the fourth was associated with snow, snowmelt against the hillside east of, east Leavenworth Road. The high counts could be partly due to better knowledge of where trapping is likely to catch more mosquitoes and the fact that we now have six working traps, but undoubtedly the two very high peaks of the river, rivers contributed to the problem. Within the city, we only have two trap sites, one at Waterfront Park at the north end and one at Enchantment Park at the skate park. These sites were not trapped very often because there were so many mosquitoes elsewhere. The most mosquitoes caught at Enchantment Park was sixteen on June ninth, while the most caught in Waterfront Park was four on July twenty-ninth. The only time trapped there this year, while sixteen mosquitoes in a trap is not bad, it is enough for some people to notice. And that was Jenny's report. Um, da-da-da-da, blah, blah, blah. Um, October seventeenth, attended the lap meeting, um, the report, um, were you there, T-Bore? Can't remember. No, okay, I didn't do a report. Um, October seventeenth, I attended the mayor's forum at the WRI, and I thought both you and Rich did an excellent job. Both are accomplished at speaking in front of people and getting your message out. October eighteenth, I attended the link roundabout ribbon cutting. Both Mayor Carl and fellow council member Ann spoke. Then many of us went for a ride on electric link bus to the transfer station behind Safeway and back. When I first looked at that bus when I got there, just like that far off the ground, and I thought, how can that possibly go over speed bumps or anything else? Well, Ann informed me that actually it's, it was down for folks to get on, and then it raised up, even though when I was inside, did you notice it raising up or coming down?
Yeah, a little bit.
Did you? I didn't notice anything. I don't know. Anyway, it was a lot of fun to ride on it and, um, and, um, I, I was really glad I went to that. I wasn't kind of sure, did I want to, or, anyway, I'm glad I went. Um, on the eighteenth, I attended the Upper Valley Historical Meeting's yearly membership meeting. And, um, they just go through all the reports and everything for the year and had some snacks to eat and invite all the members to come so they know what's, what's, how it runs. Um, on the nineteenth, I attended the Osborne Neighborhood Playground Equipment Meeting. We're working diligently to try to make this all happen before summer's over next year. And so we've been looking at tons of equipment and we've got it kind of nailed down. We're just a small group. On the twenty-third, last night, I attended the pool group meeting, who's working on the new pool to repl, maybe replace the one we have. We're also a smaller group and, um, just starting, just getting, just gathering speed and trying to find a direction and, and what's the best way to go. And then this morning, I attended the Downtown Steering Committee Meeting, which both Clint and Selby were at, and that would be Selby's uh, report, in my opinion, and Orlic's. And so, anyway, thanks for listening.
Great. Go ahead.
Feel like Chantel. Um, shorter report, um, she's a novel, I'm a haiku, um. On the, on the seventeenth, uh, virtually, I attended that mayoral forum as well. Well done to all involved. Um, also this morning, yes, I attended the downtown, downtown steering committee. Lot of great conversation, not a lot of uh, consensus or like, you know, we're gonna go in this direction, but it was a lot of great conversation. Um, a couple of things, and Selby can fill in the blanks where I'm missing, but had a great conversation about uh, those big belly garbage cans, uh, throughout, talking about aesthetics, you know, do we, there was two schools of thought. One, you could just have them be black and just kind of have them make them disappear. Does that make them uh, an attractive thing for graffiti artists? So then do you wrap them? Okay, if you wrap them, okay. Do you really want to, you know, your garbage can really prominently in your selfie that you're taking in Leavenworth? So good conversation there. Lots of really good conversation regarding the continued vision of Royal Lady Plaza, um, lots of different perspectives, uh, and I think the discussion was worthwhile. Um, and then, uh, parking update, I actually, this is one of the reasons why I was there, uh, virtually, I had to step out of the office for the parking update, so I'll let you take that. Um, and then um, just some general discussion, but the big belly garbage cans in the Royal Lady Plaza, I think dominated the discussion. It was, it was a good one. That concludes my report. Yeah, also a little haiku here, thank you. Um, I attended the last weekend of Oktoberfest with, um, Mayor and Selby and a few other, and Sharon, you were there. What was that? Who else was there to teach you? Someone else, another.
The Royal Ladies.
Royal, yeah.
Yeah, uh, Watson.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that was great. Uh, beer was delicious. Uh, so great job tapping. Um, and then I attended the parking committee meeting, and it looks like we are experimenting with kiosks instead of parking meters in certain areas that would, you know, centralized kiosks, like one per block. And the parking study summary, which did discuss the value, the potential, um, feasibility and profitability of parking garages with a lot of different factors involved. So we don't have enough information yet, but it looks like the parking structure is, has some feasibility associated with it, but it wasn't super clear. And Selby probably has more data than I do, and that's about it.
Great. I have a negative haiku. Zero. Great.
Okay, so I can report something. I attended the, uh, candidates forum, the high school, well done, all the participants, and I also, uh, zoomed in on the mayor forum, also well done. Uh, and I also participated in the, uh, Oktoberfest uh, short parade and served as a volunteer for one weekend. So I've got kind of my frontline view of Friday night and Saturday afternoon, um, on, in Oktoberfest, and that was, that was worth it. Um, got a new perspective, kind of up close. And the only other I'm doing is trying to recover from COVID. That's the end of my report.
All right. No, very well.
Yeah.
Very well.
Need you back.
Thanks.
Nice to see that you lasted this long, so that's a good sign. Um, I don't have a report. I'm gonna pass on and go ahead to Selby.
All right, thank you, Mayor, Council. Last Thursday, there was a parking advisory committee meeting where the committee received an update from Rick Williams Consulting on the parking study that is underway. Rick presented the data collected in August, evaluating the efficiency of our parking system, which they said was operating very efficiently with the three-hour meter parking downtown, resulting in a much higher turnover of parking stalls than observed when the same data was collected in two thousand and seventeen. Because of the three-hour limit and the paid-on-street parking, the parking lots are experiencing higher utilization. They also gave an overview of the preliminary pro forma for a downtown parking garage that would add an additional two hundred spaces. The parole, the preliminary report shows that a parking garage would not completely pay for itself, but would require subsidy from the Parking Enterprise Fund of an amount estimated between ninety thousand and seven hundred thousand dollars per year for twenty years, depending on where it is built and how it is operated. This, uh, project will be wrapping up sometime in the new year. Uh, Parking Manager Shanda Lemmons provided an update on her efforts to replace the downtown meters with kiosks uh, as meters continue to be problematic. Uh, the plan is to pilot a meter replacement project on Commercial Street this winter, most hopefully. The Downtown Steering Committee met this morning. The biggest discussion item was the location of the Royal Lady Plaza, which the Downtown Steering Committee believes should remain in the previously planned area on Front Street near Munchen House. The next items for the downtown closure, preliminary plan for the Downtown Steering Committee to discuss is evaluating the road, um, elevating the road to match the height of the sidewalks and whether to have heated sidewalks. After this process, staff will move forward with an RFQ to select a design firm to work with the committee to continue the Front Street redesign. Um, and our new communications and special projects manager has been hired. Um, I was negotiating with her last meeting when I was asked to divulge who it was. Um, and she will begin work tomorrow. Her name is Cara Raftery-Zuki, and she comes to us for Pacific Engineering, where she worked in project management and community engagement. She lives in Cashmere with her husband and children, and this is a highly competitive position with nearly twenty applicants, including many local candidates. But Cara was the unanimous choice from all who participated in the interview process. And a reminder that our next community engagement night will be next Wednesday, November one, at the festival, five, eight PM, and hope to see you all there.
Now.
Good day, Mayor Cory. Just a couple of dates, Council. We have a loader on auction, if anyone's interested in bidding on it. It is on the publicsurplus.com website. Uh, that is a two thousand and three Caterpillar nine thirty-eight G Series two. Current bid right now is at twenty-five thousand, three hundred dollars. It is closing on November ninth.
How many bids?
Uh, it, there's a tiny little bidding war happening. I think five people have kind of played with it. We typically see it get active in the last twenty-four hours.
What's a loader?
What's that?
What's a loader? You don't know what a loader is?
A tractor with a big, with the big front bucket. It's a big four-wheel machine with a big front.
Piece of equipment.
Oh, is it a blade loader thing?
No, it's a bucket, and then it's articulated.
I think I know what it is. With the little claws that stick up?
It's a rock bucket, yeah.
It's a big piece of equipment.
Okay.
Thanks. This is older. Uh, FY, finance report is in your packet. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me directly. Um, just from a general standpoint, our major tax revenues are all still continuing to, to, to trend uh, slightly above twenty-twenty-two levels. And I did see the October distributions, which is August numbers, and all of them are slightly higher than August of twenty-twenty-two, so it's doing good there. And today I took some time as I was in putting the utility rates into the rate and fee schedule for you for your next meeting to take a real close look at the garbage fund. Uh, good news is going on there. We are definitely, uh, showing about ten percent increase on the revenue side over what was projected. A lot of this has to do with the big audit that uh, Deputy Clerk Truman McGlocklin did with a couple of the utility crew folks, and we found that some people were not being charged appropriately. That was all caught early in the spring, and I think that that has contributed to the increased revenue. Uh, on the expense side, we're actually down about ten percent. And I think a lot of that is the re, uh, food waste, the recycling, just all those different changes that are happening quickly, particularly with our commercial core. Uh, that Waste Loop and Wynton are both taking a lot out of our waste stream, I think. Uh, we're still quite a shortfall from restoring our twenty-five percent reserve. However, I think that with this year and next year's increase that we have planned for that, we should be almost close to full restoration of that. So I anticipate with the brief study that we'll be looking at twenty-twenty-five, probably being able to stabilize that back down to normal two or three percent annual increases for folks. And that's it.
Okay, right. I just have a brief, brief report this evening. I just want to publicly express appreciation of the Washington State Public Works Board for funding our emergency loan application for the Pine Street Water Main Replacement Project. Uh, and a shout out to Andy for working swiftly on the Public Works for loan application and managing this project. We had a, timing was of the essence. We were able to make a special board meeting, so we were able to turn around the funding application very quickly and obtained funding very quickly. Nice. And again, Andy provided details on the loan. Um, just one, one additional item is that the annual debt service payment is approximately nineteen thousand for twenty years. We're in scores, we can tighten up, they'll turn twenty years, a long time for a loan that's small. Ball cleanup is underway. I smell everyone out. We're partnering with Wynton, and we will no longer stop Highland Yard Waste at Cemetery and have to manage it more than once, and we're just putting in a yard waste bin and hauling it for us. So we don't have to, yeah, touch it multiple times. Public Works divisions are diligently, diligently preparing for winter. Rick and John's team are prepared to move in the snows this evening. Uh, kind of some bummer news here. The DOT Leavenworth Salt Shed Project appears to be delayed until next year due to higher-than-expected cost estimates.
Any update on the sand?
So we do, we are able to get sand as during emergency situations from the camp.
Okay, but not, not, and so where's our regular still up, Lewitt?
Lewitt and Eva's up on Stevens, on the way to Stevens, by the rest area.
Okay.
So we can get salt, salt.
Yeah, no, you told me about the salt. I was just curious about the sand too, because that's a big part of it. Is there potentially a plan B for the sand? Are we pursuing another avenue for that?
We could get it from the county if we need.
Okay, but under emergency.
Well, if it, if it's needed, we, we'll get sand.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure it stays reasonable for you.
We try not to do too much sand.
Yeah, sand's messy.
Okay.
Okay, and, um, let's see, two more things. Last, uh, thank you, Councilor Walsh, for the card and treats.
Thank you, Sammy.
Thank you. And last but not least, just a reminder, Public Works Campus Tour, there's one spot available for Thursday for anyone, one more to go, so when I set three o'clock in there.
Okay.
Public Works Campus Tour.
If you haven't been down to see the Public Works.
I don't know that, it's been a long time since I went to.
Tom, I'll probably jump in.
Thursday, Thursday, so, okay, so Councilor Emilio is gonna be there at three, that, that's three council members, but I will add another date, Councilor Waters.
Okay.
So I will reach out with a.
Point, wait.
Yeah, I was, I was expecting to work this week, but our weather's not cooperating.
Call me if you decide you can.
That's it. Thank you.
All right. Okay, we are ready for our executive session. I would ask for a motion to recess in the executive session for fifteen minutes under RCW forty-two thirty-one ten one B, property selection, cider acquisition, potential action to be taken.
So moved.
Thanks for hanging in there, you guys.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I hear a clue. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Made by Marco, second by Clint. All in favor, all to your hand. Okay. We'll.
While we wait for that and get everything set up, I would like to say that I actually did just write a haiku. Going after Sharon. It's a haiku. It's a poem, it's a, it's a, it's a poem that's five syllables, then seven syllables, then five syllables. It's a.
Have you worried?
Here it goes.
Do we have any waiting?
No.
Are they all disappeared?
All disappeared.
Okay, let's have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Clint, seconded by Sharon, all in favor. They all raised their hands. Okay, they all want to go. Thank you all.
Pretty famous, thank you.
That was easiest one I got.
Yep.